Good evening. It is 5:57. This four of a public hearing will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libby Laboe?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This meeting, this public hearing is now being held through remote participation due to the COVID-19 pandemic and all communications for public input as well as in this public hearing proponents and opponents needed to have been emailed to the city clerk at the city clerk's, the city slash council, rather, the city council email at city/council@fallriverma.org prior to 3:00 p.m. the day of this meeting. First item on our public hearing agenda today is the five-year capital improvement plan. I am not seeing a representative yet from the administration here, but we're just hearing from proponents and opponents. So is there a motion to open the hearing at this time? Motion to open the hearing has been made by Council of Peckham, seconded by Council of Kilby. Roll call, the opening here.
On the motion, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
And President Ponti?
Yes. First item is the five-year capital improvement plan. Madam Clerk, is there any written proponents on this item?
No, Mr. President.
Is there any written opponents on this item?
No.
There are no further written proponents or opponents on this item. Is there a motion to close the hearing?
Motion to close.
Motion to close has been made by Council of Peckham,
seconded.
seconded by Council of Pelletier. Discussion, roll call.
On the motion, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera? And President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn our public hearings?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn has been made by Council of Peckham, seconded by Council of Pelletier. Roll call.
On adjournment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby Laboe?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Carrera?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. It is 6 o'clock. We're going to roll right into our Committee on Finance. The four of a City Council Committee on Finance will now be called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call.
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes. Here.
Dion?
Here.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libby Laboe?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Pelletier?
Here.
Carrera?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. Pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. This meeting is being held through remote participation, live on Channel 18 as well as streaming online as well through the livestream on our Facebook page or on Fred TV's Facebook page. This meeting is being held due to the COVID-19 pandemic and is being held remotely. I will say that councilors were all polled and the consensus has been to return to council chambers for our meeting in March. So we will be proceeding with Madam Clerk with the proper notices for live meetings. At this time, at least that meeting will be closed to the public, so all remote participation, all public input will still need to be emailed to city underscore council@fallriverma.org prior to 3:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, which brings us to the first agenda item, which is citizens' input. All citizens' input needed to have been emailed to city underscore council@fallriverma.org prior to 3:00 p.m. today to be heard during citizens' input. Madam Clerk, citizens' input.
The first we have before you is with regard to the public art policy for the city of Fall River. A public art policy can help to make an impact on the cultural and economic life of a community. Fall River has many examples of public art, but it would probably help to bring them in under the umbrella of a formal policy, both to protect what already exists as well as to promote new installations and projects. As a part-time resident of Fall River, I am a member of the Greater Fall River Art Association, the Historical Society, the Preservation Society, and the Fall River Public Library, all of which would be enhanced by a public policy supporting culture and art. I am also on the Steering Committee of Creative Arts Network. According to the Mass Cultural Council, several mass communities have developed public art plans to address the growing collection of public art in their city or town. Salem, Worcester, and Lowell are featured on their website. In recognition of the impact that public art can have on struggling communities, in 2014, Governor Deval Patrick signed an executive order establishing the Mass Percent for Art Program, MPAP, and Public Art Commission. This order identified possible funding sources for preservation of existing and the creation of new public art in Boston and the gateway cities, Fall River. At Tuesday's meeting, I hope you will seriously consider the proposed, the proposal that is presented. This was from Judy Bednarz from Alton Place, and I apologize, she's a resident of Brookline as well as Fall River. The second we have is, let's see. Presented by Dave Dennis of 132 Highland Avenue. Dear Mr. President and Honorable Counsel, good evening and thank you for the opportunity to address the council regarding the matter of an arts policy for the city of Fall River through ordinance. Through a recent survey conducted by Creative Arts Network, we found that people have become increasingly interested in public art and gardens. To review the survey, go to creativeartsnetwork.com at the Art and Culture Survey tab at the bottom of each page. Many cities and towns throughout the U.S. and the Commonwealth have implemented formal public art policies for all the reasons mentioned in the resolution establishing a public art policy. City of Fall River recognizes the value of public art to its citizens and visitors. Public art provides engaging imaginative spaces that enliven the public experience, foster community, celebrates our unique stories and collective history, and inspires us to experience the world with fresh perceptions. Public works of art can transform and activate civic spaces and create a unique identity for Fall River as a destination place. Public art in Fall River has a strong history from the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Wall in Fall River's bicentennial park, currently under construction in 2021, to the 1940 statue of Prince Henry the Navigator, murals and artworks set along South Main Street created by members of the Greater Fall River Art Association. Currently, the city of Fall River does not have a permanent public art policy in program to promote the city's identity, civic pride, attract visitors and businesses, develop vibrant creative spaces and jobs. A newly developed public art policy and program would raise public awareness of the impact of public art and its cultural and economic contributions. The purpose of this public art policy and program would be to give direction for art, establishing a diverse collection of public artworks with the cooperation of the community artists, providing ongoing opportunities for local, regional, and possibly national artists of diverse backgrounds to advance their art forms with temporary and permanent public artworks. Economy, considering economic development and cultural tourism when advocating for public art. Quality, incorporating art and design projects of the highest quality throughout the community, creating a museum without walls and making art accessible to all, and legacy, providing a legacy of art and culture for future generations. Ten Great Reasons to Support Public Art. One, it is public. Everyone has access to public art. It's directly in a public space and not confined to galleries or museums. Two, it enriches our physical environments, bringing streetscapes, plazas, town buildings, and schools to life. Three, it is a great tool for civic engagement, building social capital and encouraging civil discourse. Four, it provides professional opportunities for artists and cultivates an environment in which the creative class thrives. Five, it boosts local economies. Businesses supply materials and labor. Restaurants, hotels, and transportation companies benefit from a site that attracts visitors. Six, it is an investment in placemaking, measured by livability and quality of life that also engenders community pride. Seven, it connects citizens to their neighbors and their shared history through documentation and celebration and makes cultural heritage a tangible community asset. Eight, it enlivens places where people work, which can improve employee morale, productivity, and respect. Nine, it creates supportive learning environments. It opens eyes and minds. It attracts students to environments conducive to both learning and fun. And ten, it raises public awareness about important community issues such as environmental stewardship and respect for diversity, such as the ongoing Hortensia Project. I am therefore respectfully requesting your favorable consideration to implement a formal public art policy for the city of Fall River through ordinance. The next one we have is from Tim Farrara-Badard of 126 Liberty Street. Hello, my street, Liberty Street, has a recurring issue with trash pickup. Quite often, trash receptacles are left in the street by the company doing the trash pickup. Sometimes the receptacles are left on their sides. This creates parking issues for residents, also can cause elderly residents problems with picking up their receptacles. I can understand when there are snow-related issues that can cause some problems, but about one time per month, sometimes more often, the receptacles are left in the street. When I call the Department of Solid Waste in Fall River, I am told that they do not handle these issues and I need to call the company myself about the issue. When I speak with John Perry, he says the administration expects residents to call the trash company for issues. This does not make sense to me as I do not have a contract with the trash removal company. The city of Fall River does. I pay my taxes and as part of that, I expect the city to manage my trash-related issues. There is nothing to this effect on the website for the city other than I should call in the, in the event of a missed pickup. This makes sense as this may be an issue if I took the trash out late, but routine oversight, excuse me, oversight of the trash company should not fall to taxpayers. The city website states that we should call 508-324-2585 or 508-324-2580 to report litter complaints on the litter enforcement webpage, but when I do, I am told they cannot or will not help. Why don't we find the trash collection company the same as I would be fined for putting my full trash receptacle in the street? $100 for first offense? The city web could certainly use additional money and in private business, I have found, if you stay on top of vendor's contracts, you can save money and/or get the service you are paying for in the contract. I am unclear how the city manages our relationship with our trash vendor since it would seem our DPW sends all with complaints directly to the trash pickup company. How can the city, how can the city know how well they are performing if they do not get involved? The next is from CJ Ferry of 300 Buffington Street. Council President and Members of the Council, I wish-
Before you continue on that, there was a couple of councilors that raised their hand on that item. Counselor Kadeem?
Thank you, Mr. President. Can we have that letter forwarded to the administration? The trash contact, track specifically speaks to the, those infractions and we're supposed to be keeping track of that. So I don't know if there was some inaccuracies that were stated to the, to the homeowner or the resident, but you know, those, those are things that need to be, be managed and tracked with regard to easy waste. You know, I know oftentimes for the, for the most part, especially in my neighborhood, they're pretty diligent about putting the carts back on the sidewalk, but there are times that they are left in the middle of the driveways and in the streets, which obviously create hazardous issues when people get out of their cars and things of that nature. So if we can just forward that over there and make sure that the administration is keeping track of this and holding EZ accountable for those items. I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Vice President?
Oh, I, this gentleman also sent several councilors a second email, I think myself, Counselor Peckham and Counselor Dion, which I responded to. I also reached out to Mr. Perry. He said they have the number for the city on the website so they can keep track of the complaints. They do then ask residents to call EZ as well. For this address, he has spoken to EZ. They have followed the truck and they have been better at putting the barrels on the sidewalk. I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Lee.
The, the citizens' input is timely because just recently I've seen that as well, and I haven't seen it much prior to the last few weeks. I know maybe the snow and the weather has been maybe a difference maker, but I, I haven't seen it and now I'm starting to see it a lot more. So this was a timely input. I, I, I'm really kind of repeating what has already been said ahead of me is that there needs to be more of a uniform way of reporting. It shouldn't fall so much on the person who's trying to make the complaint to have to call several different numbers or talk to several different people. There should be a more streamlined way. And, and just because this may fall into my subcommittee, I don't think it needs to, necessarily needs to be a resolution at all, but if there is, I'm open to deliberating more if we need to in my subcommittee as well. With that, I yield as well.
Thank you. Counselor Carrera?
I did, citizen input, and I did reach out to Carlos Cudo, who's the supervisor from EZ disposal. Mr. Cudo has been by this gentleman's house, hoping to speak with him to try to get some resolution and has spoken to the drivers and does have an eye on it, but you know, he, he has reached out and is more than willing to have the gentleman call him when there's a problem. He did say that on days, you know, that we've had snow, it's difficult sometimes to put barrels back. They're not going to put barrels back exactly where they got the barrel from, but on the sidewalk, et cetera. But certainly each time that I've called EZ with any kind of a constituent complaint, they've been more than accommodating, reaching out with people. I got two calls this week and he handled both of them. So perhaps having this gentleman contact EZ or certainly send him the number and, and have a discussion with him so that he knows exactly what's going on. But Mr. Cudo has been by there, is following the truck and has talked to drivers. So I just wanted to share that with everyone. With that, I yield.
Counselor Dion?
Yeah, I certainly think that the weather has definitely, definitely been a contributing factor. And if with the, with the carts being on the sidewalk, you have these, these guys trying to pull sometime, there's a lot of weight in these carts. I mean, obviously on wheels, easy, you know, easy to move on, on a smooth surface is one thing. When you're trying to pull carts up and over snowbanks, I, I would imagine it's rather difficult for them. Is there anything that says, states that homeowners should have any type of open path to, to make it easier for them to take them off the sidewalk and put it back on? Is this kind of a double-sided problem that we haven't considered it in the past that we might need to consider moving forward? Because I can see where it could be rather frustrating for the workers, you know, not necessarily, I'm not defending them if they're doing something wrong or inaccurate, but I can see where this probably could present a problem on both sides. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. You know, we've got problems with people shoveling their sidewalks and we're going to try to make a path for the rubbish guys. But I, I think EZ has done a, a good job throughout the city of Fall River, and I don't know whether or not they got some new drivers or they have to talk to the old drivers to make sure they do the right job. I think that's all it's going to take because I noticed a few barrels a little more in the last couple of weeks, but there's a problem and I'm sure they're going to try to straighten it out and if you can all work together and if they got problems, yeah, there should be a place, a phone number that actually the city should call up. Hey, we've got a problem here. What, you're leaving it for the people of Fall River? Well, they go to work and maybe you know, you can't get them early in the morning or in the afternoon, whatever the case may be. So we have to try to get the complaints to the right place and try to do the right things for the people of Fall River. That I yield.
Thank you. Madam, Madam Clerk, next, citizens' input.
The next citizens' input is from CJ Ferry, 300 Buffington Street. Council President, Members of the City Council, I wish to address you on several important issues. First, I wish to address the fact that the school committee has come before this body to approve a $1.8 million bond for the varsity field at Durfee High School for new synthetic turf amenities, design, et cetera. The school committee met yesterday and had this item on their agenda. Isn't it presumptuous to believe that their request for funding will automatically be approved? In a previous meeting, the school committee mentioned that it would cost over $5 million for new or refurbished athletic fields. Why are they breaking up the fields into separate projects and loan orders? Because if they went, if they were to go for a $5 million loan order, it would require voter approval. I firmly believe that this is why the Watson School refurbishment is under $5 million, but I am sure with change orders, it will go above the $5 million mark. Isn't it time for transparency in government and financing? Second, the city council and the CFO are guilty of this easy deception. They act on multiple loan orders like they did with the Streetscapes projects when they should be combined and allow the people to have a say in the spending of these large amounts of money. We hear from the CFO on nearly all loan orders that this will keep us under the self-imposed bonding limit, yet we never seem to get out of our way financially with bonding. You are considering two loan orders tonight for the school department. This is one department and these loan orders should probably be combined. Obviously, you must decide, but we need more fiscal conservatism. Finally, I support the city council's vote of no confidence for the school superintendent, Matt Malone. As a matter of fact, it would be very interesting should a member or number of members, a number of members of the city council decided to deny or object to the loan orders until such time as the superintendent is terminated. That would be a shot across the bow. Remember that you control all finances in the city and for the CFO to enter into an MOU with the school department regarding lawsuits without approval or by the city council and a dollar figure attached thereto is basically a blank check. All agreements that have a dollar figure attached to it must be presented to the city council for approval. I would ask from henceforth that you consider loan orders and if they should be combined, combine them and give the citizens the right to be heard on the matter, and please act accordingly on the MOU and loan orders for the school department. Next, we have Melanie Leaked of 967 Montgomery Street. Dear Members of the City Council, I would like to address my disappointment and concern regarding the way things are being managed by the school committee. I tried to address these directly by contacting them January 26th and yesterday, February 21st. I have received little to no response. Many new details have been leaked regarding the investigation of the allegations made against Superintendent Malone. Every new detail is worse than the last and it makes me question the judgment of the school committee as to why they kept him employed by the city. From what I've seen, a person who behaves this way should not be a leader of the school department. Fall River Public Schools has enough challenges and the staff should feel empowered and inspired by their leadership, not demoralized and the target of ongoing harassment. It's hard to imagine the justification and reasons to keep Malone and little information is being shared by the school committee. Details of these allegations are only being discussed in executive session and the report from the investigation has not been released to the public. One should refrain from making judgment until all the details are present, but what is the public supposed to do when details are kept secret? The only details that have been released are quite awful. I do not agree with the lack of transparency in this matter and the managing of it, of it at all. I requested that the school committee reconsider its decision by either releasing details involving the investigation or ending the city's contract with the superintendent. If the public is making unfair assumptions, let the truth set them free and release the report. I'm not sure if the citizen, excuse me, I'm not sure if the city council can take any action, but I encourage you to take action for the sake of transparency. Fall River citizens deserve to know what is happening in our schools and our government. And this one's from Sarah Rogics of 830 Langley Street. Dear Members of the City Council, as we all know, Superintendent Malone is accused of using hate speech against a disabled staff member, sexual harassment, and creating a hostile work environment. Members of the school committee became aware of these issues in September of 2020 and decided to have Superintendent Malone remain in his position while an outside investigation was conducted. This allowed the superintendent continued interaction with those who accused him for several months. In December 2020, the investigation was completed and reviewed by the school committee and it was determined that discipline was warranted. However, the process for handling complaints and the discipline doled out was not in line with the school department's own policies and procedures. School committee has been unresponsive to requests for open dialogue around these issues. Multiple emails from concerned citizens have been sent and have been unanswered. Letters have been submitted for citizens' input and have been censored or have gone unread. Citizens have attempted to present in person at school committee meetings only to be turned away. However, one school committee member did respond to a council, city councillor's social media post telling him to stay in your lane. If this school committee member could reply unsolicited to a personal social media attack, what is preventing him from replying to citizens and taxpayers looking to understand the situation at hand? This, the way forward needs to include releasing the results of that investigation so that we may understand what led the committee to make their decision. One school committee member indicated that sharing the investigation report would potentially ruin careers. I would argue that if information included in that report would ruin careers, those individuals should not remain in their positions. The lack of transparency in our school committee is not only concerning but disturbing. Transparency allows us as taxpayers to hold elected officials accountable and ensure they are acting in the best interest of their constituents and citizens. Transparency enhances communication, openness, and efficacy. Without transparency and a genuine willingness to engage, our school committee is acting in a way that is contradictory to the duties with which they are charged, to serve in the best interest of our students, staff, and community members. At the school committee meeting on February 8th, one school committee member walked out and attempted to come back in to secure a vote. The behavior of the superintendent was antagonizing and belligerent. School committee members refused to go into executive session with what appeared to be a predetermined discussion and no explanation. Other school committee members were argumentative and contentious. It was a shameful display of inappropriate behavior. Our elected officials should, at the very least, be held to the same standards of conduct and behavior that our students are held to. This behavior would not be allowed in a classroom setting and it should not be allowed within the school committee. My request to the city council is as follows. I understand that the city council does not have jurisdiction over the school committee but works collaboratively to approve the school department's budget. I also understand that a joint meeting is scheduled for March. Given the lack of communication from the school committee, I would like for citizens' concerns to be presented at this meeting or beforehand if deemed appropriate. I'm asking for this as it has been shown that the school committee does not wish to respond to citizens directly but are willing to engage with city councilors, at least via social media. The superintendent's behaviors are not new. He has demonstrated a history and pattern of these behaviors in other school districts that have been widely publicly reported. Superintendent Malone's behaviors and the subsequent actions of the school committee have again placed a stain on our city and have set us up for litigation. This is not out of the realm of possibility as it has happened in other districts where Superintendent Malone has been employed. Could the city council please clarify what the impact on the city's finances would be should the superintendent and/or school committee be sued for their actions? If these are the individuals responsible for overseeing the education and care of our students, how can we as parents feel like there is any level of trust or integrity left in this administration? Citizens continue to voice their concerns and those concerns are gone unheard. If we will not stand against ableism, discrimination, harassment, and hate speech, what are we actually standing for? We also have from Colin Dias of 560 Ray Street. Good afternoon, Council President and Members of the City Council. Mayor Coogan said I couldn't submit the citizens' input to the Fall River School Committee last night, so I am, am submitting it to be read at the council meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and School Committee Members, Mr. Hart and Mr. Aguirre. The troubling revelations revealed over the last week has cast another black cloud over our great community. There is a systematic issue in your school department. The revelations that have come to light over the past week are not issues that have just come up. This is an issue that has run amok for months, if not years. Faculty in the school department deserve an environment where they can freely conduct business without fear of bullying or retaliation. The school department needs a revamp. We need to restore integrity and accountability to the school department. There is an implanted system of backroom deals, nepotism, quid pro quo, and bullying in the school department. There are several interests being placed before the people's interests. There needs to be a full in-depth investigation into the Fall River School Department by a true outside source. The superintendent should have been placed on paid administrative leave and standard operating procedures should have been followed. The committee of four, Mark Costin, Joshua Hetzler, Mimi Larrabee, and Tom Corey, you are all good people. I will not, I would not question your character, however, I will- I will not, I would not question your character, however, I will question your judgment. You need to explain your actions. We need to release the report. We need more transparency on this process and we need to stop this toxic culture in the school department. And I challenge the committee of four to put your city first and fire the superintendent and investigate into how this happened in the first place. And lastly Superintendent Malone, you should be ashamed of yourself. So President, I know there was one more citizen input that was presented, but I don't see it here in this folder. I think I do have it here in my email though, if you don't mind, I'll read it.
And while you're looking for that, Madam Clerk, I know our assistant city clerk is here, so perhaps we can write a note. And maybe this is two or three citizens' inputs over the last couple of weeks that we've received the, from constituents that don't have the ability to respond to school committee related agenda items through citizens' input. So I would appreciate it if you could please reach out to the school committee's staff and ask what is the process for citizens' input and why these people continuously can't get their citizens' inputs heard? Because that's shameful. So there seems to be a couple of, this isn't the first time, this is probably the third or fourth time where residents have to come to us because the school committee is not reading or is not responding to citizens' input. And they deserve an outlet. So if you could please get back to the council on that.
Sure.
Councilor Pereira?
I agree wholeheartedly with that, but my understanding is several years ago, and perhaps Leo or Brad or Kama Kadeem can recall that the school department for their meetings had some type of a review. That review was conducted by retired Judge Amen Fernandez. And at that time, a decision was made that people could come and provide input, but the only input they could provide was what was on the agenda. If there was something on the agenda, then they could provide input to that. When the council put together citizen input, we left it open that a citizen had the right to come to the council and speak with us or share with us any concerns or comments or congratulations, that they could come and speak to us on everything. But I believe that the rationale that was used on the school department's side from former Judge Amen Fernandez was that citizen input can only be for matters that are on the school committee agenda. And I think that that's inappropriate. When issues like this come up, I think that people should be able to go to the school committee. It was their vote, it's their decision, they have all the facts. And it's unfortunate that we're having to listen to this because no matter what, we have no control over what elected members of another body do. So if you want to send a letter to request that they review that from what the council has been facing, I'm willing to sign on to that. Because I think you're right. People should have a right to express themselves at school committee meetings as well. Good point, Council President. With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, councillor. And I, just so you know, there was some rules that the school committee adopted back on the twelfth, February twelfth, two thousand eighteen for citizens' input that was just emailed over to me. So I would, I will forward that over to the clerk and maybe the school committee in collaboration with our city council office can work on streamlining the process so that citizens can get their voices heard before the school committee. Because they're, like councillor Pereira said, they're elected just like we are and they deserve to have their voices heard before that elected honorable body. Madam Clerk?
Yes, I do have the email. It's from David Olivera of Fall River. Dear President Ponti, Vice President La Liberty and members of the city council. First off, I want to thank President Ponti and councillor Kadeem for their leadership and expression on the superintendent and putting a no confidence on him on tonight's agenda. Too bad we have school committee members except two that care about our school system. So I heard the school district is coming before the council soon about needing more money for school sports fields. I strongly recommend this council not approve and give any more additional money besides what we have to give. The blame is on the school committee, not the city council. They dropped the ball. Thank you. Be safe.
Thank you. Is that all, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's all.
Just to correct that citizens' input, the, no, the resolution was filed by councillor Dionne and councillor Kadeem. Just so the community is aware on that specific citizens' input. Next order of business is a five-year capital improvement plan. It was referred to the committee on the nineteenth of January. Mrs. Sahadi, good evening.
How are you this evening?
Very good. If you could please give us a brief overview of the capital improvement plan and we'll answer ten questions.
Certainly councillor. So the process with the capital improvement plan is we meet with each of the department heads and talk with them with regard to what their real needs are. And their needs can be capital as in those expenses that have short-term lives and would potentially be paid for out of one-time money or out of the operating budget. And those expenses that are more long-term in nature and would need to be bonded for. As you know, we haven't been down to the city council with the exception of this evening for any bond authorizations during fiscal year twenty-one. As you know, it's been an unprecedented year. So in the document itself, it is highlighted in varying colors as to what would be those types of expenses that would be paid through the operating budget and those types of expenses that would ultimately be bonded or in some instances, monies that would be funded by another agency. So for an example, there may be some parks that need repair that could be and would be funded by the Community Development Agency. But this is a working document and this document changes honestly daily, if not weekly, if not daily. And so as a result, what was presented to you back in December has actually already changed significantly to this point in time. In particular, the building that EMS is attempting to bond for that is going to be added to the Fire Headquarters Building has now changed in estimated costs from the architect, actually twice at this point. In addition, I have a meeting tomorrow with Stock Architect and Mr. Gallagher and the Fire Chief as well as the Deputy Director of EMS because the cost of that particular building has now come in at two point seven million dollars. That building is going to be scaled back to some extent. The director of EMS is indicating that it's a bit overkill for what they had originally asked for. If you look in the document that you currently have, I believe it was estimated at two million oh fifty at that particular time. So that building has changed significantly. In addition, there has been some discussion over the last month with regard to the DPW department needing a new building themselves for storage so we can reduce the rentals that we have throughout the city and utilize one centralized location. We are now working with an architect on that particular building. I believe that's also stock. But Mr. Gallagher would know better as to who the vendor is, but I believe it's stock. They're now estimating about one point nine million dollars. In this document, that particular building was not included here. But rather, we at that time were talking about the potential of a transfer station over at Lewiston Street. That transfer station based on the amount of time that would need to go in and councillor Pereira can certainly speak to this, but the amount of time and effort that would need to go into this transfer station, it is not likely that it would be part of the fiscal twenty-two budget or even for that matter, twenty-three. So this, as I said, this document continues to change on a weekly, if not daily basis. What we have been keeping is a shortlist of those items that we will need to ask this council for authorization for bonding in the near future. As you, as was indicated tonight in some of the council or the residents' input, two of the items are on the agenda this evening. One is for the Watson School and the other is for the fields at the New Durfee High School. What else can I tell you? I can tell you that there are a number of items that are highlighted on the document that you received that the intention of the administration would be to include them in the operating budget. So for an example, right now, we're attempting to carry five police cruises, one unmarked cruiser, a snow removal piece of equipment as well as some active shooting kits. And I believe there was one other item, oh, the repairs to the gas tanks, all in the operating budget as opposed to them being bonded. We're trying to only bond the larger items and include in the operating budget, the mayor's operating budget on an annual basis, some capital in each of the departments that may need capital. I don't know if anyone has any questions, but in essence, that is a summary of the process and the document that you have in front of you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. If any of you have questions, but if I may, just for clarifying purposes. Last night, the school committee meeting, it was kind of brought to my attention or our attention that we're kind of turning the lights on for some of these projects, these capital projects that we've kind of shut the lights off on due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. I believe Mr. Aguirre asked a question last night to the mayor about some of the capital needs the school department has and it was disclosed last night that we're going to kind of restart that. So is that process of kind of putting some capital projects on hold no longer the case going forward, Mrs. Sahadi?
Well, certainly, the COVID really put a halt, if you will, on the administration coming to this council, this body to request authorization for any of these projects to include, you know, the EMS building. We'll use that as an example because prior to COVID, the deputy director Olivera was in need of this particular building and had requested it way back then. I think, if you might remember, I believe it came down to you at one point without the estimates from the architect and then went back and it's taken this amount of time in order to get where we are. So yes, to some extent, that is correct. The projects that I believe, and my internet was fading in and out last evening, so I didn't get to hear the entire meeting and didn't listen to it again after it ran. But it's my understanding the capital items that are school-related that are the smaller items are intended to be paid for with school operating monies. The only projects that I believe coming forward to you that I've been aware of is the Watson and the Durfee Fields.
Okay. I'll ask my questions after my colleagues speak. I'd like to recognize councillor Ali first.
Just a few questions and I guess that two and three, item two and item three are kind of related to my question. You said that you went to department heads to see what they needed. You're planning ahead for five years and I'm assuming that, I think there is an assumption here that there will be tax raises those subsequent five years, correct?
That would be correct.
And I think that one of the things, one of the things that we hear as, as the elected, from the elected side of things is what's my tax dollars doing? What am I, what am I investing in? And people don't always see immediately what they're investing in. And I, and I guess my question to you is, is this something tangible that people are going to be able to see whenever this much money is invested? This much of their tax dollars is invested in to hear that they're going to get a tax raise for the next five years, maybe even more? You know, is there, is there a measuring, is there a way to measure it so that people can see what they're getting out of this? Because I really feel as though there's going to be a lot of people out there that are not going to appreciate seeing their taxes raised and not seeing immediately the results of that. Is there something, is there a measurement that you use to say it's improved? Because this is an improvement plan. So when I, when I hear the word, when I see the word improvement, I'm thinking there might be something of a before and after that we can kind of tangibly see and say this is what your tax dollars is investing in.
Certainly. So I guess the biggest one is two hundred and sixty-three million dollars for the high school. It's pretty tangible. It's out there on Elsbury Street and everyone can see it going up and that's.
And they voted for that, you know, they voted for that and that one, yeah, that one's clear.
I assume that the Watson School, when it's completed, will be pretty obvious as to the repairs. A number of those repairs will be ADA requirements. And so as a result, you know, obviously someone would need to go into the school because the ADA has to do with the elevators, et cetera. If I'm looking at some of the items on the capital improvement plan, the police department is in dire need of windows. Again, infrastructure that would be pretty obvious to anyone being able to see that the building has not been repaired in a number of years and needs those kinds of monies invested into the police department's building. Some of the items are not as clear, right? The infrastructure for the IT department, when switches and those kinds of items are at the end of life, they're all in a closet on the sixth floor and none of us really understand unless you're in IT what all those repairs are necessary. But, you know, the consultants have indicated that in order to continue the infrastructure, the technology infrastructure in the city, those kinds of repairs are necessary. So those aren't as obvious to, you know, the residents of the city. But a number of them are very obvious. One of them that I believe is on the list to be paid for out of operating money from the school department is the repairs to the Talbot parking lot. I know there's been a lot of discussion at the council with regard to the Talbot parking lot and the potholes that exist in that parking lot. So, you know, some of your tax dollars or some of our residents' tax dollars are going for that.
So on this, and it's a good, it's a good opportunity to segue into that. Are there, I know that we, I had a conversation recently with Mr. Perry about the tree stumps. That was during my subcommittee and I mentioned to him that some of the stumps that we're seeing that are dying are still growing roots that are breaking up the sidewalks, especially in the downtown area. Is there anything, is there anything that we can look forward to again over this next improvement scale? Are we going to be able to see the roads and sidewalks improve along the way? Is that part of it as well? And then I have one more. As the, as the taxes keep getting raised every year and our budget gets bigger and bigger, we are consistently, and I know that there's councillors here that I can definitely attest to it, who've actually had long conversations with people about it. You know, department after department keeps on speaking about how there's not enough people in those departments to do the work, to get the work done that we need to get done. We're getting more expensive and yet we don't have enough people to do all the work. So is that factored into this as well?
Well, certainly, when we bring down the mayor's proposed budget to you, the number of people in certain departments are clearly being identified and those that are in need of shoring up their departments with additional staffing have asked for that additional staffing. And it certainly is the intention to provide as much staffing as possible in each of these departments. Some of it is just a matter of people leaving the system or leaving and some of that just goes to the salaries as well, but leaving, leaving the community. Right now, we have, as of today, I believe, we have twenty-five vacant positions in the police department. Now, we'll be starting an academy shortly and that academy is going to have fifteen new recruits in that class, but we have twenty-five vacant positions in the police as patrolmen right now. A few lieutenants. We have, I believe, four dispatches. So we continue to struggle with the pay scales that we pay here in Fall River attracting the good help and staffing for our department.
I mean, and the water rates, which was already told to me last year that the water rates are going to be, you know, seeking to increase every year as well. It's just getting, it's just getting more expensive and it's not, we haven't even gotten the, talk about the new school, we haven't even gotten that yet as well. We haven't felt the effects of that as well. So I'm always, you know me, I'm always going to be concerned about this and it's going to be hard to, it's going to be, I want, I want what everybody wants. it's going to be hard to, it's going to be, I, I, we, I want, I want what everybody wants. I want it. But the affordability, I'm just not sure about it. Um, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Pereira. unmute yourself, please, counselor.
Sorry, Mrs. Sahadi, uh, the school department has been able to obtain a lot of money over COVID, et cetera. Can any of that money be used for other things? I know that the fields were not part of the construction of the high school. I, you know, um, that, that, that's separate. You can't, um, put in for that. But is there any money that they have that they can put in, uh, to complete things?
Sure, yes, certainly. So, um, i- if you look in your document, um, it's highlighted in multiple colors. But for an example, um, Talbot Middle School is in need of, um, replacement windows and that's 1.4 million dollars. They plan to, um, utilize their federal and state funding that they've recently received to do those repairs. Um, in the current year, same school we just talked about, the drainage and parking lot improvements, that will be utilized from their funding. Um, Henry Lord has, um, some road repairs. And they've estimated those repairs to be at $165,000. They intend to utilize, um, their monies for that as well. Some playground equipment at, um, Spencer Boarden, um, $42,000. If we go into fiscal 23, um, I can go on, $120,000 for, um, a retention wall that needs to be repaired at Westall, um, some boiler work to be done at the administrative building. That's, that's scheduled at 1:25.
All of that stuff they're paying for. I was specifically, and I, I, you know, read all that. I understand that. I was specifically referring to, um, the, 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 the field. Is there any, their money that can be used for the field or is that too large of an amount and that's why they have to bond and is the, what's the bonding rate now? Is it at a good rate for us?
So we would, I, I would have to speak specifically to, um, uh, Mr. Pacheco and to Kevin Almeida with regard to, um, in particular, the Durfee High School fields. Um, it was told, or at least presented to us when, um, they presented their capital plan that the Durfee High School fields would be broken into two pots. So, um, that is correct. That is how it's presented on your capital improvement plan. Um, it's for two different areas of the field. 1.8 million dollars in fiscal 22 and 4.9 million dollars in fiscal 23 for a total of 6.7 million dollars that they intend to spend on fields that they're asking for bond authorization on. Um, that is also true with phase two of the Watson project, which is primarily the ADA, um, repair work that needs to be done. They are also asking, it's on tonight's agenda, I believe in priority matter, 4.9 million dollars for that to be authorized. Um, they are, they're utilizing their monies for the smaller projects.
Right. I don't have an issue with that, but I just wondered if there was a way that they could throw some money and the bonding be less, um, because they had more money and what maybe you and, and Kevin on the other side can talk about that. I mean, I know that people are upset with the, you know, school committee's action or the school superintendent or what have you. But to not authorize the bonds, who, who are we hurting? I mean, uh, if you look at the entire city, uh, most of the city has new schools. Kids in all these communities, you know, in the rest of our community, they have, uh, new schools, schools that have been remodeled. And here you have the Watson, one of our last small schools in the Flint. So if we don't authorize that, and it's for handicap accessibility, it's to lower, uh, fountains, to put handrails lower and things like that. And, you know, I, I get a little concerned when I hear people say, you know, don't offer, you know, don't give any money until something else. Wait a minute. You know, not authorizing for handicap accessibility for them to get into the next phase and complete this. On one hand, we say that we don't take care of our buildings. Now they're taking care of the building, doing the repairs that need to be done, et cetera. And, you know, who is this for? This is for the children. You know, I mean, I don't want to spend this kind of money on a field. I was never an athletic type. I was a cheerleader. But I wasn't the running athletic. But, you know, I mean, Counselor Kilby just smiled. I know, you know, he was athletic, so was, uh, Counselor Pont. I'm not sure about Kadeen, probably not. Um, but I don't know about Brock, Tekum, whatever. I mean, maybe some other people were, but who are we doing this for? We're doing this for the children of our community. So to say, don't do anything until this happens, please let's not do that. But let's think of the children and the teachers at Watson School. And I, I live in the Flint. I've lived in the Flint all my life. And, you know, the kids in the Flint deserve what the kids have all over the place. Um, I just wanted to know if they could give us a little bit more money so we didn't have to bond as much. And boy, it's pretty expensive.
It, it certainly is possible. You remember too, that this was, this document was put together prior to them receiving the 17 million dollars worth of S R two money. So, um, without having all of those details in front of me, it is possible that, um, although it would be authorized, um, to spend for the project, um, it's possible the funding could come from another source.
Okay. With that, I yield. Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Kadeen.
Thank you. Just, uh, to clarify, Counselor Pereira's statement, uh, you know, Counselor Kilby was, was an athlete. I, I seen him in, in a, a Durfee uniform with those pictures back in the day. Counselor Pont, I don't know. I think those were photoshopped. He definitely wasn't on the Chris Peckham workout regime. That's for sure. Yeah, I was, I was probably, uh, a starting forward somewhere while I was sleeping in gym class or something like that, but.
I have to, I have to, please, can I?
Go ahead.
It's a levity is really, really nice and that we need that sometimes during these tough times. So, you ever see Counselor Kadeen play golf? I have. And years ago, uh, there was a fundraiser at the boys' club and I saw Counselor Dean's a tall guy. And, uh, he looks like a Jason Tatum type. You ever see Counselor Kadeen play basketball? I have.
Hence, hence the reason I'm sitting on the city council.
Comedy can be a good thing too. Thank you. I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
Counselor Kadeen.
So, uh, Ms. Ms. Sahadi, just a, a question with regards to the capital plan. So I, I know in the letter that was drafted, the, and I'll call it arbitrary because it truly is an arbitrary number. Uh, we've, we've always stated that, you know, if we stick to that $10 million number, um, we'd be able to be in a good position and kind of plan long-term on what we want to see for the different capital items. And I, and I think it kind of goes to Counselor Lee's question with regards to, you know, the taxpayers. Cause I, I think it, if we, if we keep that going year over year, um, what we're able to do is ensure that the equipment and resources that are needed for the departments are being maintained properly and not costing more money. Uh, but we do it in a way where we're not necessarily increasing the taxes because we have that as a base so that it's not constantly going up. It's a, it's a flat carryover year over year over year of $10 million. Now it is taxpayer money, but it's not creating an additional, um, requirement to, to, to have a two and a half or anything else like other fixed cost increases. So with that, um, in terms of the 10 million, where are we currently, um, anticipated to be with, within that number?
I knew you were going to ask that. Um, hold on one second. Um, so this year, our fiscal 22, um, we, assuming that even if you authorize debt going forward, we wouldn't have a payment in 22.
Until 23, right.
That's correct. Um, our debt service excluding the high school is 9,752,031. So we're within the 10 million as we.
So nine million, I'm sorry, what was that number?
I'm sorry, 9,752,031.
Okay. And, and roughly, and I, I know it's about, you know, let's just call it rounded, rounded up. Um, or down a little bit to make it easier, $250,000 difference between that, that 9.7 to the 10 million.
Right.
That being said, how much roughly can we go out and bond, right? So is, is it 20 million to get us principal and interest over, let's just assume, uh, an average payback period of 20 years.
So if we're talking.
It's pretty significant. It's not just the 250,000. So it's not like we only have 250,000.
That's correct.
Leveraging it.
And if we're doing it on the bigger projects, we're able to leverage it for a longer period of time. So if we're doing it for the construction of buildings or major repairs to buildings, we can go out 20 years. You know, if we're doing it for the vehicles, we're really limited to five years. So what I'm trying to do and what, you know, this council has, you know, obviously suggested that we do over the last number of years is for those smaller items, they may not be smaller in dollars, but the smaller items include them in the operating budget rather than bond for them because the payback would be, um, a much shorter period of time.
But just in, in general, so roughly the 9.7 million dollars, uh, to get it to the 10 million would probably be, again, this is assuming for the FY 23, not the 22 budget.
Right.
Uh, but 250,000 is roughly about, just in principle, not interest would probably be about a $5 million that we could borrow for that one particular year or, or this particular year to get us to the 10 million for next fiscal year.
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, and don't forget, I didn't bring with me future years debt service, but we have other projects that are coming off. Um, quite frankly, if we get out seven years, um, the majority of the schools are coming off.
Hmm, which, so which is going to be a significant drop off?
That's right.
Right. So, um, in terms of, I guess in terms of that, and let's just call it a $5 million number, um, for simplicity's sake, I know there's interest involved there. So it's probably less than $5 million, but let's, for, for intensive purposes for the discussion, $5 million. It, what is it? What projects, I guess, will the administration be coming down for, for the council? And I, I know you said this is a living document and I, and I recognize that. Uh, but in terms of priority, priorities, uh, are, are you, um, do you have a list going that you anticipate to have this come down before the council?
I do. I do actually. Um, I don't know that I actually opened that this evening because I thought you might ask that as well. Um, but I do have a list. The, um, police station is one of the biggest items on the list. I think that's 750,000. And then some, um, if you hold on one second, I will actually open it and be able to speak a little bit better. Um, it's hard to carry everything home with me and then say, okay, what do I wish I had? So. I apologize. I should have had this open for you. I guess the bigger items, of course, are the ones that we just talked about. Um, while I'm still looking for this, um, we also have, um, 4.9 million or so, which is going to be Waterface 21. Um, in addition to, in addition to that, um, infrastructure wise, um, the, um, ah, here it is, sorry. Um, the MIS department is looking for about $350,000, which is, um, for switches that have end of life. Um, the police department, now this is sort of on their little wish list, but I've, what I've done is I've looked at, um, 19 million dollars. So, you know, we can go to 20 million dollars. So where are we at with 19 million dollars? So technology, um, infrastructure that we just talked about was at 307. Repairs to, um, the, I'm sorry, it was the fire station repairs to the fire station are at 750, where upgrades to the windows and other repairs to the police station are at 922. Um, then you've got the library boiler at 250. Um, the parking garages are still needing repair. Um, Chris Gallagher is estimating those at 360. Um, the wish list bucket truck, the police department would like replaced is at 150,000. You've got, um, the Durfee fields that we're, we've been talking about, that's 1.8 million. You've got Watson at 4.9 million. Um, the EMS building, right? So, um, we're thinking now it's probably going to be closer to 2.2, but we're not really sure. And then DCM, the storage building that we've been talking about is at 1.9 million. So that brings us close to 20, 20 million dollars.
Okay.
The question is, is which of those projects are going to end up being most important? And then of those projects, what I would like to do, um, after meeting with the mayor and the departments again, with regard to the shortlist, um, then look at what their useful life will be and try to calculate what the debt service is going to be and also calculate when these will really, even if you authorize them right now, prior to June of 21, you know, as well as I know, it takes a long time to get some of these projects off the ground. So while the authorization might not be there, the first payment might not even be to 24.
Right, right. Okay. Um, no, I, I appreciate that. And then the, you know, my, my third question was just going to be about the impact truly being on 23, but you, you, you touched base on that. So, um, with that, I, I do just want to, you know, make, make a comment in, in regards to Counselor Pereira and, and I appreciate her, her, her statements. Um, what I, what I will say though is in, in terms of any discussion about potentially, um, you know, objecting to loan orders that come before us, um, you know, unfortunately it's the superintendent that put this in a, put us in a position. Um, and while students do need buildings, do need, uh, some of these, uh, capital items, what the students really need are teachers, principals, administrators, who are going to be the best and the brightest to serve this district. And with a superintendent that we have, um, I think the impact is, is far greater than a field or ADA compliance at a, a Watson school. And if that's the only decision that the city council has to, to leverage and force, uh, an injustice to be corrected at the school department, then I'm willing to take it. Um, and that's because that impacts the entire city with an absolute tangible. We don't need to try to figure out, you know, what does a building mean to education? People mean things to education and our students and our, our school district deserve a lot better and, and I'll stand by that. I yield.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Dion.
Um, in terms of the field, I, I have a whole litany of questions. Unfortunately, I don't think, Mrs. Sahadi, most of my questions you can answer. Um, you know, as one would be something to the effect of we're supposedly building an environmentally friendly school, but yet we're going to invest money in a petroleum-based field. That's kind, to me, kind of contradictory, but that, that's outside your purview. Uh, my question is, didn't we in not so many years ago, didn't the city bond for new athletic fields?
We, we bonded, uh, Mrs. Sahadi, I don't know if you can, we bonded for the Durfee Athletic Field and the track for the, for the football field. That was what was bonded for. I know that was a lot of, Counselor Kilby did that, uh, advocated for that back on, under the. Station, Counselor Kilby.
Point of clarification. Thank you, Counselor Dion. Yeah. Um, going back maybe 10, 15 years ago, maybe more, um, we, we did that. We, we bonded for a, uh, new athletic fields. We bonded for, as, as Counselor Pont said, a, a new track. And, and, uh, before that, we've, uh, we, we couldn't even have state meets a- at the school. So we, 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 um, under the Carrer administration, I'm sorry, no, the Lambert administration, um, the school committee and the city council voting unanimously to do that. So I'm, I'm going to comment after you, but I, I want to just, um, you know, when I do give my comments, I, I definitely have a passion about this. Uh, my kids, uh, I'll, I'll reserve my comments before, uh, I'll let Counselor Dion, but correct. We, we bonded for a field about 15 years ago now. And it's been enjoyed by hundreds upon hundreds of kids, uh, throughout the state. So I yield.
Thank you. Yeah. Just thank you for the point of clarification, counsel. Counselor Dion, there was two fields that they, they bonded for. There was the actual football field where the stadium is. And then there was another football field behind it, which is used for soccer. Both of them are turf fields and were bonded and installed at the same time, which was in 2007.
Correct.
14 years ago. So essentially, so I thought those. So essentially, so are those bonds have are are paid off essentially? Or were they more long term?
Mrs. Sahadi?
They would, they would have been long term, um, what year did you say that was, Councilor?
It was two thousand and seven when they installed the field, so I'm not sure what year hit the books.
This wasn't the field house remodeling, was it? Recreational facility, was that what it was, four point six million?
That sounds about right.
That sounds about right, um, that's been paid off.
But we have no outstanding debt in terms of athletic fields at this point in time.
That's correct. Unless something came in after that, because I can only look through, I mean, I wasn't here for all that period of time. But if that's the year we're talking about, that debt has been paid.
Now, the building of the new Durfee, has that in- impacted or affected any of those fields? The football field or the?
That, I don't, I don't think that I foot, the football field is going to stay where it's currently located. The tennis courts and those types of athletic fields are going to be relocated and rebuilt when the school gets demolished, as I understand it.
So the, the, the only fields that they, they, uh, Council Dion, the only fields that they took out was the freshman in JV baseball fields and anything that was along the corridor of Ellsbury Street. So the um, the base, the varsity baseball field is still going to be in use as well as the football field, the track in the practice field behind the football field. So that's going to remain untouched and in the same location.
Well, the varsity baseball field is in the same location, is untouched, but we, but we need to bond for one point eight million dollars for a new baseball field?
That is on their agenda because they want to make the baseball field turf.
So if we weren't recreating it, there wouldn't be the necessity for the bond, is that what you're saying?
Mrs. Sahadi, I, I
Mr. President, I think that includes drainage, I think there was a a major drainage issue over there as well.
Uh the baseball, the baseball field is a swamp. Um, and they can't even play on that baseball field till like May or June, and that's halfway through their fo- uh their baseball season. So I, I, the Council Akadeem is correct, it does include, um, i- it does include drainage.
Yeah, I did see drainage on the, on the list, um. Hang on one second. Let's see, um, well, I'm not on that page at the moment. Uh, yeah, it's forty eight thousand, six hundred for uh the drainage trench, et cetera. Um, so basically, so we could, again, I I suppose the right people aren't present at the moment. So we, we can't address the drainage issue, um, without having a new, a totally new rebuilt field.
Correct.
So, so I, I, I am not the, I'm not like the school department and uh finance person, but I can tell you that the synthetic turf varsity baseball field is what, what is in this capital improvement plan as well as what is before the council under priority communications. That is strictly only for the varsity baseball field, it has nothing to do with um any additional practice fields, has nothing to do with the girls varsity softball field, it doesn't have anything to do with the freshman or JV fields if they plan on having one. This is strictly for a turf field, how I understand it, a turf field to be similar to the current football field that's there and also assist with uh draining because it is a swampy swampy field where it's located.
Now, I believe it was two school committee meetings ago. Uh, they alluded to the fact that ultimately they were going to be requiring five million dollars uh for athletic fields, is is that a correct statement?
Um, actually, I believe it is, um, six million, seven, hold on, it's in your capital plan. Six million, seven, so they'll be, they're looking for one point eight million dollars this evening. Um, and then they're going to be looking for another four point nine million dollars in fiscal twenty three. But quite frankly, um, you would need the um, Mr. Pacheco here to describe what the specific needs of these fields are, because I have not been privy to any of those discussions.
So if this bond is approved, that would go in effect in fiscal year twenty two?
It would get authorized in fiscal twenty one, that's where we're in now, and it would, the project would begin and the potentially first payment would be due in twenty two. If not, we may just owe interest in twenty two, depending on when this project really gets underway and gets completed.
And the timeline would be fiscal twenty two, the request for the four point nine would occur? Or that would occur in twenty, fiscal year twenty three, do we know that?
I would say, I would say, based on the way Mr. Pacheco presented his capital plan, it would be requested in fiscal twenty two for payment in fiscal twenty three. Now, again, you know, the timing of these projects always seem to get delayed. And a lot of times, we borrow short term and only pay interest initially um as we are needing the cash flow for the projects and then go long term the following year when the project is completed.
So I guess where I'm going with this is, we're ultimately truly looking at six point nine million.
Seven, six point
to have everything, uh, six point seven?
Seven, yes.
Okay, six point seven. So to me, ultimately, that decision should be the taxpayer's decision and not the city councilor's uh decision because it's over the five million dollar cap and it's a substantial amount of money. And that's where I would stand on that, um with that, I yield.
Thank you, Councila Kilby.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to save my passion, I, I, I think this is going to get referred to finance. So um, you know, I, I'm ready to approve it today. And I've, I've been on this road before with um, you know, some elected officials, some cops who just do not want to move forward with regard to um doing things for kids, I've seen it before. And um so my, my, th- this, especially when it comes to uh the children in our city, uh the largest, the only high school we have in Fall River, it's truly our Fall Republic School campus. Um, and it, it is just astounding that I'm, I'm hearing negative comments over uh or or, you know, I, I think we're going to gather the votes somewhere else, the Council Dion's already on a, on a mark saying she's not going to vote for it. So we've got to try to gun the votes some, some other place. Um, but um, I remember years ago, Pat Foley, God rest his soul, uh, made a comment saying our, our greatest natural resource in a city is our kids. And I made a vow when I was thirty years old, I'm fifty six now, when I first got elected to school to me, school committee, if anything comes in front of me that is for children, I'm going to vote for it. This is long overdue, it's entied, it's, it's, it's totally encompassed our campus. Um, like I said, the, the, the symbol of Fall River. Um, and showing other communities that uh our kids are not second class citizens, they, they deserve everything that other children get from other wealthy commi- communities. And I would suggest that we all take a tour, I think I saw that, um, that I, I went recently, and see the amazing things that that are going on. And and to Council, Council Akadeem's point, um, uh, I'm going to abstain, uh, I'll say right now, a, a full present from, for your, from your resolution, because my wife's a teacher. And I know, Council Akadeem, how hard the teachers work each and every day in our city and how much giving is, is, is being done on the part of educating our thirteen thousand students in the city. So I, I promise not to be passionate here, but I do not want the kids to be held hostage over the fact of the controversy that's going on with the superintendent of the schools. It is wrong, so if we're going to tie that controversy with loan orders to benefit the kids who have been through so much during COVID, it's just fundamentally wrong. And you know something else, the social media uh uh movement on a part of some elected officials has to stop.
It has I, I disagree.
Well, I, I, we, sometimes we do, Council Akadeem, you know, I respect you, but I'm going to, I'm going to have to abstain from the going further uh right now because my wife's an educator. And um, and I know that there's definitely uncertainty, there's definitely um name calling, there's definitely um many things going on in the school department. But to put a caricature on Facebook with a tree with people's, people I respect, stick, saying this, that conflicts with their face, you, Mr. Council Akadeem, uh you have to realize that that's wrong, so I'm going to stop.
It's, it's not wrong, everything that I stated, without doing that, Council Kilby, everything that I stated was facts. There was a disclosure statements that were released to the city clerk redacted. All the information should have been found in the disclosure statement, public record. In fact, in fact, Council Kilby, do you know, I just received a, a letter from uh, from uh Matt Malone's attorney telling me to cease and desist, again, similar to the Jaisel Correa situation, yet again, another attorney who can't spell, doesn't know how to spell counselor, telling me to cease and desist on a public figure because I stated documents, I will continue to state the facts. I never attacked anybody personally, okay? Nobody can deny that Mark Costa's wife was just hired as a school nurse, nobody can deny that the, that the mayor's brother is, no, no, the mayor's brother is the HR director, nobody can deny that Tom Correa's daughter works in the school department, nobody can deny
Hello, Council.
Mimi Larivee's brother is, is, is the principal. None of that is inaccurate, none of it was statements or accusations or character. What it was, was a tree of conflict of interest, that's exactly what it is, it is a conflict of interest. If it was not, they would not have filed disclosures. And if they didn't file disclosures, they should have not been redacted. So don't come at me telling me that this, I don't have the right to do that, as a city council, I have the right, I'll continue to stay in my lane. But let me tell you, my lane, you guys drive in cars and put your directionals on to switch lanes, I don't switch lanes. My, my truck is a wide load, I'm taking up all three lanes and I'm going to stay in my lane. My lane is the city of Fall River, all right? So I don't care about the threats, again, Matt Malone, the superintendent, trying to intimidate, sending me a, a legal letter from his attorney, thinking that I'm going to back down, similar to what Jaisel Correa did to me, I didn't back down, I'm not going to back down because it's right for the city and I'll continue to state that.
Thank you, Councilor, I, I have a couple of questions. For, I'm not going to be argumentative here, wha- what we're going to try to do right now, Councila Kilby, is we're going to get back to the current item on our agenda, which is the capital improvement plan.
Okay, but uh, I must say, Council President, I respect Council Akadeem, I always have.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that, no.
Thank you, I yield.
I appreciate that, Mrs. Sahadi, I got a couple of follow up questions on the item that was before us, which is the capital improvement plan. Um, I'm looking at the document that we have here and I'm seeing a large number of school related expenses uh for FY twenty two. Uh, if you go to in our agenda packet, it looks like it's page twenty five in our agenda packet, where it starts speaking about replacing existing windows at Talbot and it goes all the way down to a number that is ten million, three eighty two for FY twenty two. Are you with me, you know that page?
I am, I am.
So, so of that debt or of that specific bond authorization for FY twenty two, we're looking at ten million, three eighty two of proposed projects on the school side, is that correct?
Um, no, Council, that's total facilities.
Yes, but that's facilities with the, with the exception of the, th- this is all school buildings, though, so this is all school facilities. So we're, we're seeing the replacement is all under schools on this page and it's ten million, three eighty two. So it includes playground improvements at Green, it includes phase two of the renovation project for Watson, it includes one point eight million dollars for the Durfee Athletic Fields, one sixty five for an access road at Henry Lord, four ninety for a replacement of the boiler system at Henry Lord and five hundred and seventy thousand dollars for drainage and parking improvements at Talbot Middle School.
Right, that's correct.
So that, go ahead.
No, no, that's okay, you, you are correct, but that totals less than, and it's not significantly less, but totals less than ten million, three eighty two, because that total, ten million, three eighty two includes all facilities. So it includes libraries and other buildings.
Okay, so
Five, six, seven, about eight million here, just quick.
So I, I just want to say, and I know I've kind of publicly stated this, and I've had conversations with the school, well, not really conversations, I've sent a couple of emails uh to the school side with you copied on it. Going into FY twenty twenty two. Um, and by the way, this also doesn't include five million dollars coming at some point this year for Wiley as well. I'm not sure if you've been briefed on that, so
I have not been briefed on that, but I have heard rumor now, but that was not, as you can see, this is a five year plan and Wiley is not listed anywhere.
Right, so uh I just know, I, I mean, I, 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 I've watched a couple of the school committee meetings, I've seen some of their subcommittee meetings where they've talked about five million dollars for Wiley, that isn't included in this current capital improvement plan, but I, I believe maybe it was either the superintendent or it was somebody on the finance team that did say that Wiley is going to be coming down on our books um at some point soon as well. So I just want to make my, my point clear and and I'm, and I want to go on record by saying this now. While I understand debt exclude, uh, debt payments aren't a non net school spending eligible expense, I really need to see the school department, as you guys plan your budget and as we talk about capital improvement plans, which is what is before us, which I know you're going to be in total favor of, Mrs. Sahadi, is having the school system pick up, with the exception of Durfee High School, their debt payments for their projects. This is something I've kind of been on for the last like five or six months. These projects, including Wiley, the school committee needs to understand that when they come to us for these bond authorizations, because we're the appropriation authority, that these debt payments will impact or should impact their operating budget. So, so my position to get support from me for the school department budget and the municipal budget going into FY twenty two, an MOU or an indirect cost agreement needs to be discussed with the school department now to pick up all of the, all of their payments for the windows for this school and the playgrounds and the boilers and the renovation projects. Has those conversations happened?
Well, they, they haven't happened, um, Councilor, but what has happened is anything that is either not um part of the mass school building um projects or the two real projects that we have talked about here, um, they have agreed um through Mr. Pacheco to pick up as part of their operating expenses. So that's what you're seeing here in the highlighted amounts. What I wasn't clear on when we did put this together is that we are looking at in future years, twenty four, twenty five and twenty six, another five million dollars of both electrical and plumbing upgrades for RPA. It would be my understanding that their intention at that point would be those projects would be coming to this council for approval of a bond.
So I'm looking, I, I agree, I'm looking further into FY twenty three where we have another four point nine million dollars coming for Durfee Athletic Fields.
That's correct.
Items, we're looking at uh existing windows for Talbot Middle School of one point four, we're looking at almost a million dollars for window replacements at uh RPA. Um, so, so we're talking substantial, substantial bond authorizations coming before this council in FY twenty three. And then as, according to this report on page twenty of the capital improvement plan, we're, we're cutting to slowly start seeing those school projects kind of um not necessarily die off because we're picking up the debt, but we wouldn't have those bond authorizations going forward besides twenty twenty four, when they're going to be replacing the roof at Henry Lord, which could be one point six million dollars. So I guess my point is, i- i- I want to urge you, Mrs. Sahadi, to have the conversations and prepare in writing an MOU or an indirect cost agreement with the school department, because if there's, for whatever reason, any kind of change in people, we have something in writing that the school department understands that they are picking up the debt payments for these projects.
Well, just, just so, to be clear, and and I'll be happy to put together an MOU with them. I don't believe it would be part of the MOU that currently exists for indirects because they're not allowed to pay debt payments. But what we could do was put together an MOU um and have them agree to at least pay for out of their grant monies or their operating budget, um, these projects that they have identified in this plan.
But I'd urge you to start working on that now as we start, you know, when we have our, our joint meeting in April with the school department, I'm going to re-ask that, that question again and and see what progress has been made with the school department and the finance team on the city side and picking up that costs. Thank you very much for answering, Mrs. Sahadi, Councilor Dion.
Yeah, I just want to uh clarify a
Yeah, I just want to clarify a couple of points. One, one being that my colleague, Counselor Kilby, knows nothing about me. He jumped to a huge assumption. You, he has no idea whether I ever participated or didn't in sports, doesn't know how I feel about sports programs or children playing sports. I happen to think it's that sports are as important as school and education and learning. My point was, if we're circumventing the taxpayers, it's wrong. If ultimately what we need is six point seven million dollars, I I am not one who wants to take the voice away from the taxpayers or the voters of this city. If it's something they should weigh in on, then I think it's appropriate that they do. Would I like them to have state of the art fields, basketball courts, swimming pools? Absolutely. It's very important for children to to have adequate and the best sports and equipment that they can have. When I was in school, the best we had to play softball were school T shirts and jeans. So don't talk to me about what I think about fields or what I think children should have. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Next, hearing no further, Counsel Peckham.
Sorry about that. I just have one question. I'm unable to pull up the sheet on my phone for some reason. I understand the one point eight million and I know Counsel Kilby and Counsel Ponti, President Ponti may be able to help me out with this. Now, the one point eight million is for turf and drainage only, correct? I'll I'll address that to Mrs. Sahadi. I apologize to that question in particular.
Certainly, Counsel Peckham, I am not familiar with the specifics of either the fields, the one point eight or the four point nine that will be coming to you next year or for that matter, the details on phase two of the renovation project. Mr. Pacheco would speak directly to those two items. I know generally what Counsel Kadim and Counsel President indicated in terms of it being the state of the art field that they're attempting to build for the children of our city. And I do know that phase two of Watson includes ADA and it was separated from phase one because phase one was all mass school building eligible. And phase two is not eligible at all because it's ADA and it's bringing the cost of the project significantly over what it was valued at initially.
Okay, thank you. Now, either Counsel President or Counsel Kilby, have you seen the field recently? Now, I haven't been up there in a while. Have they gone from gravel to clay within the infield? Or is this?
The president was directing me, may I respond? Yeah, I'm not going to respond to Counsel Dion's comments, but Counsel Peckham, when I was a child, I used to ice skate where the the existing field is now. So huge drainage issues. When that school was built in in the seventies, not only the baseball football field, but the baseball field was was a swamp, as you know, because I think you played on the old field. So I I it it it's just well, it's overdue. I'll reserve my comments, like I said, Chris. It's going to get referred to finance, so we'll have a presentation by the necessary parties to come before us and and show exactly probably what the architectural drawings are going to look like. And and I'm anticipating that this, I'm I'm just guessing that there's going to be hopefully a good, really good, solid parental movement with regard to this. Because I'm not going to repeat, but this this is so needed up there. And as we're renovating that whole campus and the entire school, it's truly going to be assembled throughout the state, an example for what we're doing here in Fall River. So I I really do, I anticipate this is going to kind of grow and the parents are going to latch on and the kids are going to be so excited. And I just hope that it pushes forward. I don't know if I answered your question, my friend.
I think the question, Counsel, was if you knew if it was a clay baseball field or another one. Do you know?
It's clay, yeah, it's clay, it's it's water.
All right, so I appreciate that answer. The reason I ask is because I remember back in two thousand and seven when the football field was put in and it's a beautiful field, it was then. But there were some unanswered questions after. One of them being, and again, Counsel Kilby may be able to confirm with the night this, that we didn't buy a top, we didn't buy a top for it. And the seating capacity wasn't brought to maximum capacity where we could hold a Super Bowl and recoup our money, which was talked about when the plans were drawn up for that football field. Obviously, I would love to see that. I played baseball for Durfee. I played in that swamp at the varsity level. But my questions are, are all our ducks in a row to where we spend the one point eight million on turf and drainage? Are we then going to replace the clay? Because you can't put in turf around gravel and sand and kick rocks all over it.
If I may interject for a moment, we're getting further ahead than we should be right now. We don't, all don't know any of the answers to the questions. Mr. Pacheco is going to be at a future meeting of of the city council with the superintendent and other members of the school team and maybe a representative who will be able to discuss discuss these items.
I appreciate it. I yield then, thank you.
Mrs. Sahadi, before I recognize Counsel Pereira, I just want to make one one more comment, which I've stated before. I'm taking exception to the fact that, and this has nothing to do with the current school administration or the current municipal city administration, that they decided to spend six million dollars on a on a pool. Now, I'm not discrediting the pool at Durfee High School, but they decided with the two hundred and sixty three million dollars that they were going to elect to go to the pool instead of doing baseball fields that are underwater. I know it's a Jerabak pool, I get that, but I'm going to tell you, this was the, I I did some homework on this. The prior mayor decided in his in his finance team, decided to go ahead with the pool instead of baseball fields that are currently underwater. I don't know what went into that process. I don't know who decided that. I was told by speaking to the vice chairman of the school committee several weeks ago that the prior administration decided we're going to go in that direction. This this all should have been included in the project. I'm I'm sorry. And for you to come back to us for additional bond requests and then next year, a four point nine million dollar bond request for another baseball football field. Priorities are priorities here. And 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 for the prior administration not to have their priorities in order and look at the baseball field and what was more commonly used than a pool, I I I I take exception to that and and there should have been better.
Point of clarification.
Before I give that point of clarification, I would like to acknowledge who's been waiting a long time, Counsel Pereira.
There's just a couple of things that I want to add, Counsel President. Number one, you spoke about the Wiley School and the money for Wiley School. My understanding is that the Wiley School, that's one of the projects that's going to be from the MSBA. So that's a project down the road that the school department is going to work with. I remember hearing Mr. Mr. Pacheco say something to that to that fact, but we might want to double check with him. Also, out of the money, I think they were using that as a placeholder. So I think that a lot of the questions that we have, they're better suited for Mr. Pacheco to be here to answer them. But thirdly, my daughter went to Durfee and she was on the swim team. And the swimming pool was not legal size, so they couldn't have meets there. And when they did have meets there, you had to put your wrist on the edge of the pool because it wasn't. What I do like about the tour that I took at at Durfee was to find out that the school is going to be open at night and that our residents will be able to use things like the track, like the pool, workout rooms, et cetera, that it's also going to be open to the public. And I think if the public's paying for it, I'm happy that they're going to be using it. But I will tell you that it was very difficult to have meets there because when they originally built the school, they didn't build the swimming pool at the size that they were supposed to. So that's why they they had to change it. Just my two cents from what I've observed. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Last comment, Counsel Kilby.
Yes, Mr. President, you bring up some really good points and some really good concerns in terms of, you know, why was this all gathered with with one loan order? And I'm certainly not going to defend the former mayor. There was, I think, a lot of, well, I didn't run against it. But it's my understanding that the pool is within the school. I may be wrong, but that's reimbursable under the formula. No, I'm wrong then.
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, it, I'll I'll yield from there, but this is going to be vented in 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 finance. I'm really looking forward to that debate. So thank you so much. Thank you for your your patience with me tonight.
Counsel Palatier?
Yeah, just this is going to go to the committee. Kenny's going to be there. Is the superintendent of the school be invited or be told to be there?
He will be both invited and told to be there if that is your request.
Well, I think he should be there and, you know, we've got a lot of questions on the one point eight and in fact, everything that's happening here. So I'm looking forward to seeing him there and see what he has to say. With that, I yield for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Hearing no further discussions on the items for capital improvement plan. Is there a motion to refer the item to full council?
Motion so made.
Motion to refer the item to full council has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion on the referral to full council for action. Hearing non, roll call.
Excuse me, on referral, Counselors Kadim?
unmute yourself, please.
No.
Dion?
No.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Palatier?
Was.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Oh.
Motion carries.
What was the, what was the call?
Six years, three minutes.
Motion carries. Next order of business. And just so everybody's aware, all that was was a referral of the capital improvement plan to the full council for action. That has nothing to do with any priority communications. This is just the.
Thank you.
Yep, next order of business is the five year financial forecast. Referral to Mrs. Sahadi, if you can give us a brief overview of the five year, brief overview of the five year forecast, please.
Um, yes, certainly, Counselor, and and I will make it brief because this too is a moving target and has changed significantly from the time that it was proposed or provided to you late December, based on the charter. So we are continuing to work with each of the departments and to build the FY twenty two budget. I have one department left to submit their budget. Hopefully, I will have it later today or or by by the end of the day tomorrow, at which time the mayor will begin his meetings with the department heads to look at their department needs. In the meantime, we are cautiously looking at all of the potential revenue sources that may be available to us. The CARES money is still out there and has been extended through December of twenty one, which would provide a relief in the twenty two budget. The governor's budget gave us more relief than we had originally anticipated. We had originally budgeted flat numbers and and you see that we have some relief there. The S R two money has been provided to the school department at one seventeen million dollars. One point three is the increase in foundation budget, which would be available to be used by the city in the net school spending calculation. In addition, we have increased the estimated new growth because we're working currently with Freetown to make sure we have the value or that both Freetown and Fall River has have the same value on the Amazon Building as year one of the reduction of the hundred percent TIF will be in this coming year. And so that will provide us with some additional new growth. And we're continuing to look at the areas of local receipts as well. With that said, the departments, again, have submitted their budgets, have submitted their enhancements, whether they be, as Counsel Lee suggested before, some of them are payroll and staffing, some of them are capital in nature and some just simply need additional operating expenses for their budgets or in some cases, less operating expenses. One of the areas in particular that we have been working very diligently on is to go to the cloud for Munis. We are somewhat behind the times in the sense that we still have Munis locally on our servers. We can save server space as well as updates would be a lot more or a lot easier to implement. And with that said, we have indication from the state through or from the federal government through the state that those expenditures will be eligible under the CARES Act. So we will be reducing the monies that we have allocated to Munis in the past in the budget, at least for twenty two, and have it covered through the CARES Act. And it may be covered past twenty two into twenty three and four.
Thank you. And before I entertain questions, just as a point of information, and I know you've been working on this, Mrs. Sahadi, but and and I know this dates back to December, but in the FY twenty twenty two projections, we're looking at a budget deficit in the document that is presented to the council and the community of two point nine million dollars. What kind of headway have you made since December on bringing that down? And does that include the debt exclusion?
That did include the debt exclusion. So the debt exclusion is four million, four eighty nine, oh eighty nine for the coming year. So realistically, and I know we've spoken about this together with Counsel Kadim at one point, that original projected surplus was somewhere around six point nine million dollars. We are working in a lot of different areas with the administration right now. So it would be really too premature for me to indicate to you where we're at in terms of the projected surplus or deficit, for that matter, with regard to the FY twenty two budget. As I indicated, the departments have all submitted their budgets with the exception of one who, again, hopefully, like we'll have today. Just last week, on Thursday, we had a conference call with Diane LaFlash from Gallego with regard to our health insurance. And, you know, initially, we were including an increase in health insurance and we have been told that the increase in health insurance is going to be zero. So we are not going to see an increase at all in health insurance. So right there, we have a savings from what the original projection was. In addition, we are avidly trying to promote the high deductible plan and provide an HSA to employees to move to that deductible, high deductible plan. The HR department is working on that as we speak. So a lot of things have changed from the point this was presented to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Sahadi. Questions, Counsel Kadim?
I don't have a question.
No questions? Any further questions? Hearing no further questions, is there a motion?
To the full council?
Motion to refer the five year financial forecast to full council has been made by Counsel Pereira. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counsel Peckham. Discussion, hearing non, roll call on the referral to full council for action.
On referral, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby? La Libby Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Palatier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn finance?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn finance has been made by Counsel Peckham, seconded by Counsel Dion. Roll call, unadjournment.
Unadjournment, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
La Libby Lebo?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Palatier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes. Meeting is adjourned. The Fall River City Council Full Council Meeting will now be called to order. Madam Clark, roll call.
Counselors Kadim? Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Here.
La Libby Lebo?
Here.
Lee?
Here.
Peckham?
Here.
Palatier? Pereira?
Here.
And President Ponti?
Here. If you could please rise for a moment of silent prayer. Thank you, and thanks to our clerk. We have a flag, so I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic of the United States. One nation under God, in the name of the Constitution, liberty, justice, for all.
Very much. The Fall River City Council meeting is now being called to order. This meeting is, has been called to order already. This meeting is being held through remote participation due to the pandemic. The City Council has decided through a poll from our city clerk that we'll be returning to the City Council chambers at our next regularly scheduled meeting in March, due to our numbers going down. And I want to personally thank everybody, as well as Fred TV, the clerks, the administration, and the counselors, over the last several months since October or so, with your help with getting all these meetings planned in the, in the chain. So, thank you for that. Pursuant to the open meeting, nor any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First order of business, Madam Clerk?
The first item is a communication from the mayor and a loan order in the amount of $4,901,47 for phase two repairs to the Samuel Watson Elementary School.
Is there a motion?
I make a motion to adopt the order.
The appropriate, the appropriate motion would be to authorize it to be published and refer to the Committee on Finance, so we can have discussion.
Yes.
Motion so made. Thank you, Counselor.
By Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pereira. Is there a discussion on the item? Hearing no discussion, Madam Clerk, roll call.
On authorization to be published in referral to the Finance Committee, Counselors Kadeem?
Objection.
Object, Counselor? Is there any other? Thank you. Is there any other objections? Hearing no further objections to this item, next order of business. And just so the community and the counselors are aware, because we've gone through this before, the objection process is, and I know maybe some of the older counselors who haven't been, who weren't with us last year when we had objections, the process by which we handle objections is if there's one counselor that objects to something, it is postponed to the next meeting, whether it's a special meeting or a, or the next scheduled meeting. If there are two or more counselors that object to something, it is automatically scheduled to the next regular City Council meeting, and a special meeting could not be called for it. So, just so everybody is aware, Madam Clerk, do I have that correct?
Yes, Mr. President.
Good memory.
President, is comments allowed after an objection?
No, no, no comments allowed after objection. Next order of business. I was just, I wanted the community and the counselors to be aware of the procedural mechanisms behind the objection, because I know prior, there would just be an objection and that'd be it. But the reason why I ask counselors, so they know if there's any further objections, that's the reason.
No, no, it wasn't based on your comment. I was going to.
Oh, I know.
I'm going to make a comment and my opinion for the, whatever. Thank you.
Yep, just, no problem, Counsel. I just wanted everybody to know. Next order of business.
The next order of business is the communication from the mayor and a loan order in the amount of $1,800,000 for constructing a synthetic turf varsity baseball field at BMC Durfee High School.
Is there a motion?
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to authorize to be published and refer to finance has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
A second.
Seceded by Counselor Pereira. Discussion on the referral. Counselor Lee?
Just, just to, just to be clear, I do believe that there may possibly be another objection here, and that's fine, but I, I would, I would be inclined to vote no for this, just for the purpose of the environmental impact on this. I, you know, I, we try our best, like, like Counsel Dion said earlier, we try our best to be aware of these things the best we can. If there, if there is another method of, of putting together this, this field in a way that's more, that can protect the environment more and not be so, such a chemical pollutant, or possible chemical pollutant, I'd be, I'd be more inclined to go for this. But at the end of the day, I would have, I would have voted no to this from the beginning. And I'm really, I'm really not inclined to, to do too much spending in general, because it, it does seem like it's all being piecemeal and avoiding that $5 million limit. It seems like it's kind of done in a way to avoid that. And, and I don't think that's right either necessarily. So, with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dion? Did I see your hand raised? No questions. Counselor Pereira?
Yeah, I, I just think that the reason that it's going to be referred to Finance Committee is to give Mr. Pacheco and the superintendent, whoever, to come in and to speak with us on these items, because I thought, I heard Mr. Pacheco say that the 4.9, for example, was a placeholder. Do they have any money for this 1.8? So, that's why I think it should be referred to Finance, so we can get more information. I, I can see Counsel Lee has some reservations, as do possibly some other counselors, but that's where you're going to get the discussion and get any question that you have answered. But with that, I yield, whichever way. I, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion on the referral? Hearing no further discussion on the item, roll call on the, the motion that has been made by Counsel Kilby, seconded by Counsel Pereira, but this is to authorize the item to be published and refer to the Committee on Finance. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Objection.
That's an objection made by Counselor Kadeem. Is there any other objection? Objectioned by Counselor Dion. Hearing no further objections before the council. Two council objections. Next order of business.
Next order of business, recommendations from the Traffic Commission to amend traffic ordinances.
Would you refer to the ordinance committee?
Motion to refer to ordinance has been made by Counselor Pereira, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion on the referral, hearing none, roll call.
On referral to the ordinance committee, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Yes.
Lalibie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The next item for passage through second reading and enrollment is a proposed ordinance that relates to miscellaneous traffic.
Motion would be, motion would be appropriate to pass through second reading and enrollment.
Motion so made.
I'll make that motion.
Has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion on the, on the motion, hearing none, roll call.
On second reading and enrollment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The next ordinance for passage through second reading and enrollment is the ordinance that relates to the administrative assistant within the EMS division.
Be appropriate to pass the item through second reading and enrollment.
Motion made.
Motion made by Counselor Pereira to pass the item through second reading and enrollment, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
On passage through second reading and enrollment, Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes. And Madam Clerk, I'm not expecting you to read 97 pages of this with the rolls. So, if you could just read the resolution would be good.
Whereas the Fall River City Council finds a public art program is important to a city because it brings social, cultural, and economic benefits to the public and visitors to the city. Whereas the Fall River City Council wishes to create and establish a program which will enhance the recreational and cultural environment in the city by incorporating the work of artists into the city's capital improvements. Whereas the Fall River Public Art Plan, within its economic development and tourism goals, places a high priority on the establishment of a public art program in Fall River. Whereas public art programs have been adopted in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Whereas the resolution authorizing the establishment of a Fall River Public Art Commission and Advisory Committee to the City Administrator and City Council defines one of the commission's function as the implementation of a public art program. Now, whereas the Downtown Urban Renewal Plan, Waterfront Urban Renewal Plan, Master Plan, and Open Space and Recreation Plan establishes a goal of activating the street level and the storefronts with interesting shops and venues and continuing streetscape improvements, including public art throughout downtown and the waterfront. Now, whereas the citywide strategic plan goals of a strong and diverse economy, thriving livable neighborhoods, and stewardship of the city's physical assets are supported by a public art program. Now, whereas the city of Fall River establishes a goal to encourage the incorporation of public art in new development projects, particularly in downtown, waterfront, and historic neighborhoods. And whereas a stable and predictable source of funding for public art projects and a transparent system for administering, excuse me, administering a public art process and the selection of works can support the goal of increasing the quality of diverse public art throughout the city. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Committee on Ordinances and Legislation convene to review and discuss a public art policy.
Is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Motion so made.
Motion to adopt the resolution has been made by Counselor Kilby. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion, the sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Dion.
Yeah, Fall River was designated as one of 50 cultural districts, districts in the Commonwealth with the approval of the Fall River Waterfront Cultural District, District by the Governing Board of the Mass Cultural Council. With that designation comes the responsibility of adopting a city art and culture policy. So, I consider this resolution simply to be the first step in that process. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Hearing any discussion? Hearing no further discussion on the resolution, motion to adopt has been made and seconded, roll call on the adoption. Madam Clerk?
Counselors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lalibie LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Ferreira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
Whereas there have been a number of issues regarding the behavior of the Superintendent of Schools, Matthew H. Malone. Now, whereas many school department employees stated that their work environment is toxic, consisting of bullying, intimidation, and harassment. Now, whereas many employees have not come forward due to the fear of retribution and the possibility of losing their employment, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council go on record in support of a vote of no confidence against Matthew H. Malone, Superintendent of Schools, and be it further resolved that the City Council go on record requesting that Matthew H. Malone resign immediately as the Superintendent of Schools.
Is there a motion?
Motion.
Motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Kadeem. Discussion, one of the two sponsors of the resolution, Counselor Kadeem.
Thank you, Mr. President. So, I think everybody, you know, we just had a discussion, and I think everybody is aware of my Facebook posts, as it's been mentioned. I think they speak for themselves. Those posts have done nothing but spoke facts. Everything that is on those Facebook posts can be researched and can be seen for factual items. We have a, a number of concerns and complaints that have been brought to the, to the school committee, a number of emails that we are, have been forwarded to the City Council. We have a, a number of residents who feel that they can't speak to the, to the school committee are now coming to the City Council for citizen input. This is having a significant impact on the city and not just the school system. As we had just previously talked, it's, it's about education. And I know people were trying to suggest that we shouldn't be objecting or counselors should not object to loan orders because we needed that, as I mentioned previously. Buildings don't teach students. It's people that teach students, and we have an individual who has paid a lot of money to lead a school district and is creating a hostile work environment, is practicing discrimination, sexism, retaliation, and it's ongoing. No one can, can claim that I'm not consistent on how I handle things. When I see an injustice, I want to, I want to write it. People can suggest that there's a personal reason as to why I'm doing things as, or a hidden agenda, which is not the case, but people have the right to their, their own personal opinion. But what I will say is, is that this is very consistent with what this council has done or the stances that the council has taken against Mayor Jaisel Correa. Okay? We had City Council, School Committee members who were constantly texting us during those, those meetings, calling us, applauding us for our actions, okay? Telling us to take a stance and do everything that we possibly could to have and put, apply pressure to an individual to be removed from office when we had no authority, no authority whatsoever to do. Okay? I'm going to go back to November 6, 2018. There was a motion that was made by Counselor Kilby, seconded by Counselor Pelletier, to take a vote of no confidence on Mayor Jaisel Correa II. The motion carried, eight to one, November 6, 2018. That same meeting, November 6, 2018, Counselor Kilby made another motion to have, requesting Mayor Jaisel Correa resign from office. Okay? Again, that motion passed. We have similar situations, and you can look at them. We had a situation where the mayor was intimidating not only residents, but employees. Employees were fearful for their jobs. They were afraid to come to work. We took a stance when we had no authority whatsoever. We hire, we, we do not hire, we do not fire any employees. We had zero, zero authority, but we took a stance because we knew it was the right thing to do. There was allegations against Mayor Correa on the marijuana money, $250,000. Okay? We can use that as, as a reason as to why we did it. So, let's look at Superintendent Malone. Discrimination, intimidation, sexism, retaliation, five MCAD cases before us right now. Mayor Correa, in my opinion, took $250,000 or is accused of taking at least $250,000 from, from marijuana facilities. Okay? Not from taxpayers, from marijuana facilities. We've got five MCAD cases. One MCAD case, which clearly has a discrimination, in my opinion, with my experience in dealing with MCAD, is at least $500,000, if not more. Okay? That's just one. That's coming directly from the taxpayers, coming out of the, the school department and funding for, for schools. We have finally heard from the mayor, and I give him kudos to that. He released a statement. As we all know, Mayor Coogan could not participate in, you know, the, the investigation or any type of, take any action on the disciplinary matter. But he released a statement today, and I just want to highlight four different statements that were made in that general statement. The first thing he said, "I want to publicly express my empathy for all individuals whose lives and livelihood have been and continue," I want to stress that, "and continue to be affected by the actions of the superintendent." He is the mayor and the chairman of the school committee. We have the chairman of the school committee apologizing and, and, and expressing his empathy for those individuals who have been affected and continue, and continue to be affected. Words matter. Continue to be affected. Okay? I am sure that there were people who wrote this speech. He went over it, reviewed it, looked at every single word. So, I want to highlight and continue to be affected by the superintendent. He also went on to state, "There can be no double standard." I agree. There cannot be any double standard. Hence, the reason why I filed a resolution to take a vote of no confidence. And after this, I will make a motion to send a letter to the superintendent that he resign immediately from the City Council. Whether that is, is supported by the counselors, that's up to each individual counselor. But I agree with Mayor Coogan in his statement that was just released today. There can be no double standard. He also went on to say, "It is crucial, we all work hard to ensure the Fall River Public Schools are free of any form of discrimination and disrespect." We all work hard to ensure that there is no form of discrimination and disrespect. Okay? I would go even further, intimidation. What's more intimidating than the superintendent sending me a letter from his personal attorney on a school committee issued email address to me, telling me to stand down, cease and desist? I've already said I will, I'm not going to be intimidated. I received a very similar letter from Mayor Jaisal Korea's attorney. I laughed at it. I'm laughing at this one. I'll respond, but that's intimidation. He does not want us speaking up and protecting those individuals who do not have a voice or are afraid to use their voice because of retaliation, intimidation. He also said, "I look forward to working with my colleagues to take actionable, actionable steps to prevent incidences like this from occurring again." We haven't seen any actions taken from the School Committee. They can say that they took actions. They suspended the superintendent for a month. They pushed it off so that he wouldn't be impacted by $17,000. Okay? But there's no real actions. You mean to tell me that $17,000 is all that it costs for these individuals who have to go into work every single day and put up with a hostile work environment? That is enough? As elected officials, we should stand there and say, okay, we're going to put a monetary value on this, and the only value we're placing on this is $17,000, and the individual is still allowed to sit there and manage and lead the district in a hostile work environment? And you want to talk about double standards? Let's talk about the double standards. The School Committee calling for us to take action. The minute I start doing exactly what I did for Jaisal Korea, speaking up, trying to gain momentum, to get people to understand what the facts are, and that's all I'm putting out there, and people and people are intimidated by the facts. That is the most hilarious thing that I get out of this entire thing, is that people are intimidated by the facts. Tom Corey responds to me saying that I have made it personal. What did I make personal? That I stated your daughter works in the School Department and that you submitted a disclosure form that is supposed to highlight conflicts of interests, and they were redacted? I'm sorry, where did I cross the line? I'm not sure where any of my social media posts crossed the line. Not one single one. We've got a conflict of interest. Yes, there is a tree. There is a conflict of interest tree. Mayor Coogan has a conflict of interest. Is anybody going to deny that? His brother is the Director of HR. He got a determination from the State Ethics Commission, saying he is not allowed to participate. Okay. He stepped aside, like he should have. He released a statement. He is finally taking a stance on the issues that we've been waiting for people to take stances on. But yet, there are three other members on the School Committee who have very similar conflicts of interest but are not forced to step aside. And none of us have concerns about that. As elected officials, we do not have concerns that one individual is required to take a take a step back and recuse themselves because there is a conflict of interest, but three other individuals have no need to do that. At the end of the day, we all know what we need to do. We're all going to make our decisions. But for us as elected officials, I know we have no authority. I know this is a ceremonial vote, but we need to stand united. We need to stand behind all of the employees that have been have have been victims of the superintendent. And I've said that. Let him go back and bring it to his attorneys, because that's what they are. They are victims. They have been victimized by the superintendent who was paid $200,000 to lead a school district. We have anti-bullying policies for students, but none for any any employees or the superintendent? You want to talk about double standards? I want tangible actions. And this is why I file the resolution. This is why I will vote to support the resolution, and this is why I will make a motion after the resolution's done to have him terminated or to request his resignation. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Another sponsor of the resolution, Counselor Dion.
To those who say the actions of the superintendent are none of our business, I say the taxpayers of this city pay his salary, and this body is tasked with approving the funding of the School Department, which includes the salary paid to him. That in and of itself makes it everyone's business. A true leader exemplifies the example and sets the standard. They don't lower it. How does anyone who publicly stated, and I quote, "I broke the tenants of our core values, and I'm sorry for my lack of professional judgment and lack of professional decorum. Moving forward, judge, reprimand, or discipline anyone." How can anyone who has violated the trust and expectations of the employees of a school district effectively continue to lead? I say they can't. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Counselor. Next Counselor, Council Vice President.
Thank you. I've also been very vocal about wanting the superintendent to either step down or the School Committee to change their vote or take a new vote. While we've been told to stay in our lane, we don't get to pick and choose who we respond to and who we don't. We're the City Council, the whole city. So when employees are calling us very upset because they feel like they haven't been heard, it's our job to listen to them. And it's our job to try and right the wrongs, whatever those may be. And besides being a counselor, I'm also a resident, a taxpayer, and I have three kids.
I think she froze.
Froze.
Council Vice President, you froze. I don't know if you can hear us. Okay, she can't. She is frozen solid. Give it one more minute.
In the public schools, one of which officially.
You're muted, Pam.
Council Vice President, Council Vice President, we lost you for a moment. So we, you can have, you have the floor back, but you froze for a minute. So if you could start, not that over, but maybe after the first one or two sentences again.
Okay. So I have issues with what the punishment, I guess, is, besides the fact that that he wasn't fired completely. When there is someone that's done wrong, and he has admitted that he's done wrong, the members of the School Committee have have made public statements that they are not happy with his behavior, but he's still there and the employees are still there. And what they're doing is they're moving the employees. They're not moving the problem, they're moving the employees. How is this fair in any way, shape, or form that we're going to disrupt the employees who are victims of this man? It's not fair, and it's not how it's supposed to go. As far as this being a double standard, it is a double standard. There was an employee that was fired last year, contact unbecoming a teacher for a Facebook post that she made, one Facebook post. The School Committee and Malone issued a public statement signed by all seven members and the superintendent. "We can tell you that we are outraged by what we read from the Facebook screenshot, and we can confirm with conviction that the Fall River Public Schools do not tolerate any form of racist, bigoted, and/or hateful speech from any member of our professional community." So this employee is fired for a Facebook post, but we have multiple employees making accusations against the superintendent, and he's not fired. And not only is he not fired, the people making the accusations are moved, the ones that are still employed by the School Department, because some of the people complaining did not have their contracts renewed, and and they are now suing the schools. Another point I wanted to bring up is the MCAD complaints that Counselor Kadim spoke of. When we first spoke out about this, we were chastised for speaking out and asking questions about possible lawsuits. The School Committee attorney issued a statement at that time saying, "Any failure of the School Committee to terminate Superintendent Malone result in lawsuits is flat need not true." So I sent an email to our Corporation Council this week, who has confirmed that there are five MCAD complaints in his possession. So those were brought to the School Committee's attention last night during executive session. It's executive session, so it's not for the public to hear, but the public needs to hear that, because there's going to be legal fees with them, each of them, the ones we've received so far and any others that we get. And then there's also going to be possible payouts. And where is all that money coming from? So the School Department budget, great, but it's all city money, right? So, you know, all of this is everyone's lane, and it's the taxpayers' lane. I am fully in support of this resolution, and I will also support the letter after to ask him to resign. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Counselor Lee.
Just to, just to point out one thing about about 2019, I think it was September 2019, there was a former counselor that was pushing to have the mayor's position either replaced by a city manager or something to that nature. It was around that time, and and people, that was a hot topic for a little while, just for a little while. And I remember, I wasn't even elected yet, but I remember bringing this up in conversation to people. They were asking me if that was a good idea or not, and I kept using the school administrator position as an example. The simple fact is, the school administrator is not directly accountable. It's not an elected position, and it's not directly accountable to the people, you know, the same way that we are as elected officials, or even the same way maybe a city administrator is, is they're tied to the mayor. We have to go through the School Committee body, and I think that's the same exact way that they wanted to design the city manager, was by going through the City Council. And I felt like you were diffusing the line of accountability. If the city manager wasn't doing well or or needed to be held accountable, we had to go through the City Council to get to that, and I didn't think that was going to work. And it's looking like right, and I use the school administrator as an as an example, and now we're right here. I didn't think we would ever be here, but here we are, and we're right here with this direct line of people who want to hold him accountable, and they can't. And they can't because of politics. And I think that's one of the main reasons why I'm going to support this measure. We've gotten so, we've we've just gotten so many black eyes for, over the years in in politics, mayors being recalled, mayors being arrested, one controversy after another. And it just, every time someone thinks about Fall River or wants to talk about Fall River, we always have these black clouds over us. And I think that we have to draw the line somewhere. And just, just as in regards to jurisdiction, there's no, there's no jurisdiction on advocating for people. There's, there's, we, we're elected, we're elected officials. We get contacted for potholes and every other thing in the city. We're going to get contacted over a school administrator using the R-word on people getting involved in harassing others and things like that. We're going to get those calls. People are going to look to us to at least have a message. And for us to not have a message at all and just say, oh, no, we're talking about jurisdiction, it doesn't make any sense. We can't do that. We're, we're, we're by nature not even allowed to do that. We're, 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 we've been elected to advocate for the city in so many different ways, and this is going to be one of them. This is going to be, we're going to have to state our opinion on it one way or the other. Again, I say there's no jurisdiction in advocating for people who have been mistreated. So with that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Lee. Counselor Pelletier.
Thank you. Never in, as soon as, as long as I've been on a council, I see certain, this bad from a department head. I mean, this is crazy. Intimidation, bullying, he doesn't want to leave his post. You're telling me you've done this? Yeah, I admit I've done this, I've done this. Well, let me tell you, it's a tip of the iceberg. People are intimidated, they don't want to say anything. It's going to get worse. It's going to get worse. And, you know, it's up to the School Committee to do what they had to do. But, you know, if your wife got a job, your brother got a job, well, you kind of say, well, geez, you know, what am I going to do with this? That's besides the point. Do your job. You have a job to do. We can't leave that guy in there. He's got to go. There's a Superintendent Norwell, Massachusetts, and he went in front of the board, and he got fired in Norwell, Massachusetts. On the spot, you're gone. Didn't give no, no reason, you're gone. And Malone hired this guy for the city of Fall River. I mean, what is the matter with you? If you've got problems up there, don't bring him to Fall River and give him a job. It's absolutely crazy. And I know there's going to be more people coming out. We have to make him leave, or the School Committee is going to have to do something. We can't live with this guy in that position. There's no way. Let's get this done. I mean, if you've got some thing that you take you home, forget it. You owe it to the city of Fall River. You owe it to the people of Fall River. You owe, you owe it to the kids of Fall River to say, hey, I'm going to do my job. Well, do your job. We're here advocating that the superintendent of school should be gone. And, you know, I know they're all watching now. And listen, do your job. Get rid of this guy. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Peckham.
I obviously have the same sentiment. No, in any profession, with the allegations that were made, the emails that we saw, no woman, a person that's up there in age, or a person with a physical handicap should feel uneasy or threatened when they go to work. No man should feel that way. I think everything I've read is nauseating and sickening. I have voiced my opinion also on social media, which I've heard in the past was a bad thing, but I also agree with Counselor Kadim. It's definitely not. I have every right as an elected official in the city of Fall River to voice my opinion. We can't separate the citizenry just because one elected body happens to fall on the School Committee and the other half happens to fall on the City Council. We all represent the same city. If we see an injustice, it needs to be addressed, and I think we're going about it the right way. Thank you, Counselor Kadim, and thank you, Counselor Dion, for filing this resolution. With that, I yield.
Counselor Pereira.
You know, I'm not from the social media generation. That's just not how I communicate with people. I pick up a phone, I call somebody, there's a conversation. Not that I'm against social media, but that's just not me. But I will tell you all that I did teach in the Fall River School System many, many moons ago, and then the rest of my career was doing investigations, whether it was for DCF, whether it was for the District Attorney's Office. And when I did an investigation, I needed to hear both sides of a story. What's upsetting me is that by everything I've read, by things that I've heard from people saying, although Counselor Pelletier just said that Superintendent Malone hired somebody that was no good in in Norwell, I don't know who that was, so that that's something new. But, and I think that that's the biggest gripe that people have, is that they're not giving all the right information. When I look at this and I say that this resolution is a lack of confidence on Malone, is it a lack of confidence on members, our elected partners in the School Department? Is it a lack of confidence in their ability to vote appropriately? I don't know what went on in executive session. I don't know if Attorney Assad gave them some type of guidelines. I don't know if he said there was enough, there wasn't enough. I don't know. By what I'm hearing and what I'm seeing, I'd say, get rid of him. But honestly, I think the biggest gripe that people have is not knowing both sides of the story. You know, all these people to come forward to say that they're bullied and and they were mistreated and they were intimidated, I've seen that happen right here in government center. I've seen it happen, and people have come to me and talked to me about it. And it happened a lot through previous administrations and not just the last administration. I mean, you tried to get him out. I wanted him out so bad, I gave up my council seat to run against him because I knew how dirty he was dealing in Fall River. This resolution is ceremonious in nature. I understand, Counselor Kadim, it's to make a point, to make a position that this behavior can't be tolerated. But it's so bothersome to me as doing investigations, whether it's victims and defendants, I meet with both. And to not have that other side, I cannot understand how the School Committee would have kept someone if all this information were out there were so true. What prevented them? I, I just, I don't understand. I don't know whether to vote yes or no on this. Basically, by what I've heard, by what I've read, you know, some of the social media stuff with people's names on it, of of people who were fired or let go. of, of people who were fired or let go or what have you, I don't know how appropriate that is. Or that, you know, somebody's, um, a, a friend of benefits or something. Does that person have a family? Like, I hate that stuff on social media. You know, unless it's the person themselves writing it, I, I, I think that's so wrong. I mean, we, we're just such a tumultuous city of not getting out from under our own feet. No wonder we don't have a city administrator. If they went on and, and read, read the newspaper and went on everybody's social media, this side, that side, the city wide, my goodness. I mean, can't we just get it right? I, I really, I don't know. I may vote present because I'm here and I'll go along with whatever people feel. But in my heart of hearts, I don't understand how the school department, members, elected body, they're elected just like you and I folks, what that vote was about. I, I don't get it. Is there something that we're not seeing? And, and why are we not getting the information from them? Did it go to the state and the state is gonna look at it and determine what can be released or not? If anything's with MCAD, MCAD can't release anything. I mean, I, I read the whole MCAD, uh, conflict of interest online today and they can't tell you who's there, who's not there, what, what the charges are, what's pending, what cases they're gonna hear, what cases they're not gonna hear. I mean, this is really a bit of a cluster. But I think to the, to the taxpayers of this city, more than anything else, they have a right to hear both sides. They wanna know exactly what went on, a- as do I, as do I. I mean, by what I've seen and heard, I'd say, yeah, get rid of him if he's treating people like this. I just can't fathom, you know, our elected partners. There must be something. I, I just keep saying to myself, there's gotta be something that they know that we don't know. I, I don't know what it is, but my vote will be present because I, I honestly can't take a vote. Maybe because of my career as an investigator, it's very difficult for me to take a vote one way or another because I honestly haven't heard the other side of the story. And we all know there's one side and another side and the truth is somewhere in the middle. And I mean, I know he's apologized for some of the things he said, but what else went on? And I did receive one phone call and it was from the father of the individual that Councilor Liberty spoke of. And I think she's absolutely right. You know, you lose your job and he's not, I understand the conflict that she's feeling, and that is a lawsuit. But I just wanna share my opinion with you all. With that, I yield, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. I wanna just kinda speak on this as well now at this point. First of all, um, I've obviously taken some specific positions on this for a reason, right? Mainly because I have a tendency to remember the days of, uh, a, a former superintendent when I believe Councilor Kadeem and I first started, uh, you know, becoming friends was when he was on the school committee. And there was a time where the school committee was dealing with some really unique circumstances back in two thousand, I wanna say it's two thousand five, two, oh, oh, five, oh, six in that ballpark, when the school committee took a, a, a public stance on a prior superintendent. But before I kinda get into my dialogue on that, I wanna kinda bring, bring to light a couple of things. The mission of the Fall River Public Schools. I don't know if anybody's ever read it, but let me, let me highlight a couple parts of it. Will attain the fullest potential, become responsible members of society for their students. We are committed to educating in a respectful, safe, healthy, and supportive environment. I'm going to go a little further on that. Not only do we prohibit discrimination of any kind based on race, color, gender, identity, religion, uh, sexual orientation, homelessness, or disability. We proactively reach out to students to ensure that active participation in all extracurricular activities is there. Equal educational opportunity is not only a legal requirement, but something we earnestly pursue. That is right from this school department's mission. We have a leader in the school department who has decided to take matters into his own hands and disrespect, allegedly, and the five MCAD complaints will speak otherwise to that perhaps, to school department employees who have been there longer than he has and guaranteed will be there longer than him. Okay? So I'm taking a strong position on the actions of the superintendent based on his actions. Now, to those people and colleagues here, or colleagues on the other side of government, on the school side, who say that we're not in our lane, I disagree, totally, wholeheartedly disagree. I disagree because counselors are elected to lead. We have been elected to lead. And sometimes it means taking tough stances and tough positions. And it's an unfortunate set of circumstances that we're in, that the city council needs to even act on this because the school, the, the school committee didn't. But let me tell you that the, my opinion is that the school, that the city council has the ability and the platform to speak on behalf of those who have been impacted by this. We have the platform and the ability to speak, uh, on behalf of those who may have been impacted by this because we have the platform to do so. Not everybody else does. That school teacher, or that paraprofessional, that administrator, they don't have that platform. Wanna know why? Because I'm getting the calls as well as some of my colleagues, because they're afraid they're gonna get fired if they come up, come forward. That is what has been created here in the school department. They are afraid that they are going to get fired. And for those counselors and school committee members who were a part of the prior administration, that is exactly what this is 2.0. It's the same thing. And we shouldn't be treating the superintendent, or any elected leader, or any elected person, the highest paid elected, uh, not elected, but administrator or executive in the city, to be treated any differently. I, I, I strongly believe, and I've said it before, that our parents, teachers, and students deserve better. And, and I hope and urge that they, they, they get better. My last comment, or two comments here, is, three comments actually, is if there isn't an issue with this report, this mysterious twenty-five thousand dollar report that nobody could see, then release it. Let us all read it and let the community read it and determine what the other members of the school committee decided to go against for what, whatever reason that that was. If he did nothing wrong, he used a bad word or quote, he was a meanie, a meanie, then let's read the report. Let's see it. That's what I'm calling for. I'm gonna continue to call for it. And I'm going to then suggest that we perhaps get a resolution, or I'll ask, I'll ask to make a motion. I'll, I'll relinquish the, the chair and do so, and get a motion to release the report immediately if there's no issues. Let's hear it. Let's see it. Let's read it. And then we can all worry about this at another point. The behavior, from what I've heard from people who have been impacted and offended by this, is unbecoming of any elected official or any leader, period. Now, my last comment is, uh, I see Council Pereira, but my last comment is, for Councilor Kadeem and me being CC'd on the email at four fifty-two in the afternoon, prior to preparing for a city council meeting, to get a cease and desist letter from an attorney, this is again, 2.0 what we dealt with a year ago, or two years ago. When we were prepared to make a vote and then all of a sudden this attorney comes in and puts papers on our desk. It didn't intimidate us then, certainly not gonna intimidate me. And I find it, I, I take exception to the fact, and I will also respond, that if we're gonna start sending attorney letters fifteen minutes before a city council meeting, that we should be given equal opportunity to respond to such nonsense, to cease and desist. Are you kidding me? Do what's right and resign Superintendent Malone. That's what needs to happen. Or release the report. If you were just, you just said a bad word? Is that all that it is? We said a bad word, you were a meanie? Release it. We'll be the judge of that. Any further discussion on the, on the motion? Council Pereira.
Yeah, I just wanna add, and I'm sorry I forgot to add this before, but according to our city charter on page seventy-one, and Danny Robelot sent this to me, so kudos to Dan. But there is talk in the charter specifically to citizen input time. So perhaps we should all take a look at that, so people call to know what we can do as well. On, uh, you know, uh, that school committee has to, um, take things as well. Uh, I'm just, I'm really torn because I agree that, um, the report should be released. And then we'd know, uh, I don't know, let's, we, you know, we'll take a vote and I'll see how, how I'm feeling. I'm really having a hard time because I wanna say, get out of town. But then I want, you know, I wanna say, give me that report so I can see what the heck's going on on that side. So I'm really, um, pulling, but I, I just wanted to share that, that charter issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Vice, thank you, thank you, Counselor. Madam Vice President?
So I just wanted to share this too, Counselor Pereira. It's a, uh, quote from the vice chair of the school committee about the complaints and allegations. I'm not sure if you saw it, but his comment is, "I have no comment about the specific complaints and allegations made because they are subject of a personnel matter and potential litigation, which we now know is definite litigation. I am deeply disappointed and express to the superintendent that I do not condone his conduct or choice of language to our school department employees." It's another admission. He doesn't condone it, but we're keeping him. We shouldn't be keeping him. With that, I yield.
Thank you. Any further, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, there's a motion that has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution made by Councilor Kadeem and co-sponsored by Councilor Dion. Hearing no further discussion, roll call on adoption.
Adoption, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
President.
Alaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Councilor Kadeem?
President, uh, I'd like to make a motion that the city council go on record and send a letter requesting that the superintendent resign immediately.
Motion has been made by Councilor Kadeem for sending a letter tomorrow to the superintendent to resign based on uh, Councilor Kadeem's motion made by Councilor Kadeem and seconded. Discussion on the, on the motion before us. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
President.
Alaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Uh, Madam Vice President, uh, if you could please entertain, uh, a motion by me at this point. Um, I'm relinquishing the, the chair at this very second. That the city council send a letter, uh, to the superintendent, members of the school committee, as well as the attorney for the, uh, school department to release the report that has been paid for by taxpayer dollars and has been kept, uh, captive, uh, from dispersment, uh, to be released immediately.
Second.
A motion by Council President and seconded by Counselor Dion. Madam Clark, did you get the whole motion for the letter?
Did you?
Any discussion?
I, I do have a question.
Counselor Lee?
I, I, my, my question is relatable to accountability, um, since this is a topic of accountability. Is, is there a way to, to just, uh, do we have to wait till the charter commission, uh, come back, comes back to talk about charter, uh, charter changes in regards to, um, how we can change the line of accountability for this, for this, for the administrative position?
Counselor Lee, this discussion on the letter.
Am I not clear enough? I'm sorry if I'm not clear enough. I mean, um, s- such as the city administrator right now, position is, is directly in line with the mayor's. And we, you don't have to go through the city council necessarily to hold them accountable. It's something I would like to see, if it's, if it's a possibility in the future, for the school administrator position to be in a similar way. And I think the only way to really have that conversation would be with a charter change. So I'm just curious as to, do we have to wait until the next charter commission is formed again? Or do, is there something the city council can do right now?
Madam Clerk?
There is a review of the charter, um, that takes place, I believe it's within ten years or at ten years.
So at that point, that's when we can discuss that kind of possibility? Okay. And that, that's all my question was. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
And the motion is for the city council to send a letter to the superintendent and members of the city council and the school committee's legal counsel to release the report that was paid for by tax dollars and request that it be released immediately.
Uh, just as a point of information, there, it will be to send it to all school committee members as, not city, city councilors.
Oh, I'm sorry. I do have school committee in my notes, but okay, to school committee members. Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
President.
Alaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yep.
And President Ponti.
Yes. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Next order of business, Madam Clerk?
The next order of business is the police chief's report on licenses.
Motion to adopt the police chief's report has been made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion, hearing none, roll call on adoption.
Adoption, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alaby LeBeau? Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
We have the order, um, for renewals of auto repair shop licenses on behalf of Barrow's Auto Repair at five thirty, excuse me, eight thirty Globe Street and Kirk's Transmission at four sixty-one Globe.
Motion to adopt would be appropriate.
Motion would adopt.
Would adopt.
Adopt has been made by Counselor Dion, seconded by Councilor Peckham. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
Adoption, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
Have a number of claims?
Motion for a third corporation counsel.
Feeling referred the ad up to corporation councils been made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilor Kadeem. Hearing none, roll call.
A referral, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alaby LeBeau?
Madam Vice President?
Referral, I keep freezing.
I think she said yes.
Um, Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
And Counselor Liberty, give her a vote on that because we'll get an open meeting law that nobody heard of.
Sorry, my, my screen keeps freezing.
Yeah, I just refer to claims to corporation counsel, give them a vote. There you go.
Let the record reflect that she voted yes once again.
Yes.
We have minutes of the regular meeting of the city council of February ninth.
Motion to adopt the place on file.
Approval has been made by Councilor Peckham, seconded by Councilor Pelletier. Discussion, hearing none, roll call.
An approval, Councilors Kadeem?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti.
Yes.
We have the response of the Assistant Corporation Counsel regarding the open meeting law complaint filed by Patrick Higgins relating to the February second ordinance committee meeting.
Motion to, uh, accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Motion to accept and place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Councilor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion, hearing none, roll call. Uh, Counselor Pelletier, sorry.
I see we got two, that we got some literature on it. How many we got pending at these, uh, things?
Madam Clerk?
I don't think we have any, the council has any pending at this moment.
Oh, we're all caught up? Oh, that's good. Okay. I yield.
Don't jinx us. A motion has been made to accept and place on file has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
And we have the Attorney General's response to our Assistant Cooperation Council regarding an open meeting law complaint filed by Colin Dias, uh, with regard to a July 14th meeting of the city council.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Motion to accept place on file.
Motion made by Counselor Peckham, seconded by?
Second.
Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Hearing none, roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
Have a notice of casualty and loss for building at 551 Rock Street.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
ID number 14, could you tell me what that loss was on Rock Street?
Hold on a moment. It actually doesn't say what the actual loss was. It's, it mentions, um, 551 Rock Street, but all it's, it's a notice to preserve evidence is what it says. It was related to a, a loss, I guess, that had already been filed previously. It's Rock Street pedantic. Oh, excuse me, it's, it's, I take it back. It's water and sewer pipes which were damaged or destroyed leading to damage at this particular property.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, the notion, the notice of casualty and loss, is there a motion to accept and place on file?
Motion to accept place on file.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Peckham.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Roll call.
Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on February 23rd voted six yeas, three nays with Counselors Kadim, Dion and President Ponti voting in the negative to recommend that the capital improvement plan be referred to the full council for action.
Your motion to adopt?
Motion.
Motion to adopt has been made by Counselor Pelletier.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion, Council Vice President?
As a president, this is the, um, capital plan that we have questions for the school department on. Did you say you were going to have him answer those questions at our next meeting? So that kind of thing that you had?
Uh, yeah, so I know Counselor Pelletier requested the two priority communications which happened to also be in the capital improvement plan, um, which is the, uh, the, the Vosity baseball field and I believe the Watson Elementary School repairs, that's also in the capital improvement plan. And, uh, Counselor Pelletier requested that the superintendent be present at that meeting.
Okay, that's what I thought. So I, I voted to send it to full council. However, I, I would like to hear from the school department because those items are in the plan as well before I vote on the plans. So I won't be voting yes on accepting the plan until we hear from the school department.
On those, on those two specific items, Madam Vice President?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Motion to adopt has been made and seconded. Roll call.
Counsel, this would be for the council to adopt the plan?
That is correct.
Counselors Kadim?
No.
Dion? Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
No.
Lee?
No.
Peckham?
No.
Pelletier?
Oh.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
No.
Motion fails.
Sir, motion, uh, to, Counsel Vice President?
And this will be on our next agenda, Council President?
Uh, no, not unless we refer it for it to be.
Motion to refer to finance.
Motion to refer the item to finance has been made from Counselor Kadim, seconded by Counselor Peckham's, their discussion on the referral of finance, hearing none. Uh, and, uh, we will make sure that members of the school committee are there, uh, Counselor Pelletier as well as the superintendent. Um, and I will make sure that they are invited to that, that next meeting. Counsel Vice President?
Never mind, I just asked my own question. Then we could send it to full council and vote on it at the next meeting.
That is correct, yes.
I yield.
Thank you very much. My motion, um, to refer to finance has been made and seconded. Hearing no further discussion, roll call.
On referral, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yep.
Lullaby LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yes.
The Committee on Finance at a meeting held on February 23rd voted nine yeas to recommend that the five-year financial forecast be referred to the full council for action.
Motion to accept and place on file would be appropriate.
Almost.
Motion to accept and place on file has been made by Counselor Pereira. Seconded by Counselor Pelletier. Discussion. Roll call.
Accepting and placing the item on file, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira? And President Ponti?
Yes.
The Committee on Public Works in Transportation at a meeting held on, um, February 23rd voted to recommend that the, the street opening request for pavement less than five years old, um, be approved. This was 150 Manchester Street. And this is provided that they follow the re, um, the recommendations of the City Engineering Division.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Dion. Discussion. Roll call.
On approval, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
And President Ponti?
Yep.
We have a miscellaneous traffic ordinance for passage through final ordination.
Motion pass through final ordination.
Motion to pass the item through final ordination has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second? Seconded by Counselor Peckham. Discussion. Roll call.
On ordination, Counselors Kadim?
Yes.
Dion?
Yes.
Kilby?
Yes.
Alibi LeBeau?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Peckham?
Yes.
Pelletier?
Yes.
Pereira?
Yes.
President Ponti?
Yes.
And lastly, for passage through final ordination is the proposed ordinance that relates to the Administrative Assistant of the EMS Division.
Motion to pass.
Final ordination.
Motion to pass the final ordination has been made by Counselor Pereira. Is there a second?